Beam us up. Wow. That was quick. I'm not gonna say anything. Okay. Good morning, everyone. There's a lot of excitement in this room after last night's, uh, state's ballgame. Lot of excitement. Mr. Slade probably showed some excitement even. Yes, we're proud of the boys. Okay, uh, we'd like to call it order, the planning commission meeting this time. Uh, Mr. Slade, would you mind doing the invitation for us?
I thank you for the day that you've given to us, that you've made available for our service, uh, that you've encouraged us for, to take advantage of through word, through wisdom that you provide to us and the sermon that we need, Lord. We're relying on you to provide everything that we need today to make good and wise decisions. Thank you to these men, to the sacrifices that they make so that they might serve. Father, thank you for those that protect us and serve us out there in dangerous settings. Father, I pray that you would protect them, that you will help them do their job effectively. Father, that the folks that are being served would respond appropriately and would thank them for that service. God just, uh, make them understand how much we appreciate what they do each and every day. Father, I pray that our time today would be pleased and meaningful.
Thank you. Okay, uh... Considerations, approval of, uh, July, June 3rd's minutes.
Motion.
Motion by Brad. Second by Daniel. Any discussion? All papers, aye. I oppose. Old business.
Alright, so there's one item under old business. Would you all like to review that, or is everybody okay with that one?
I don't know, are we gonna discuss this, or are we waiting till...
Well, we have the letter said on July 15th. Just review, so let you know that efforts are underway to have all that prepared and packaged and ready to go with the 15th hearing.
Okay. Alright, new considerations.
Alright, so the first item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for John Hayman. It's at 574 Mount Helm Road. Mr. Hayman is seeking the conditional use permit to construct a barn dominium with a metal exterior. Uh, this property is located on the south side of Mount Helm, uh, Road. It's a 12-acre parcel. It's zoned RE1, which doesn't allow the metal exterior. That's an aerial view of the property. There's a gas line that runs across this property. And this, these are, um, the, um, renderings of what the house will look like. It's a two-story, uh, home with 5,000 square feet of living area. And there's a 2,000 square foot, uh, shop shown to the rear. These are views of that property. And these are surrounding.
Hey, can... That, you said there's a gas line?
There is, yes. Well, that's the picture of the property.
Okay. But the gas line doesn't run under where they're gonna build the house.
Not where they're gonna build the house, but you know, they've had to position it so they won't get, you can't get on top of that line, of course, so...
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
He won't.
How many acres is this?
Twelve.
So, aren't they wanting to subdivide?
I think he wants to divide it one time, possibly.
Yeah, yeah. Do I need to make a motion to set it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, set it.
Alright, motion set to public hearing by Steve, second by Jay. Any discussion? All papers, aye. I oppose. Okay.
The next item is a rezoning request for John McKay. Uh, this property is on Old Highway 80 and Sprayberry, uh, Road. Mr. McKay is seeking to rezone, uh, this 36.1 acre parcel from A2 to RE1. He's proposing development of a seven-lot subdivision. It'll be called Clarksburg Acres. All of the lots are five acres in size. Uh, they're proposing a minimum heated and cooled square footage of 1,850 square feet. And the property, uh, fronts on Old Highway 80, uh, Morton Rankin Road and Sprayberry Road. Uh, I think Morton Rankin Road is actually in Scott County, uh, but on the Rankin County side, it, the roads would be, um, Sprayberry and Old Highway 80. These are views of that property.
I've looked at it a couple of times, and I think it's fine. I'm gonna make a motion to set it.
Alright, motion set to public hearing by Steve. Second by Daniel. Any discussion? All papers, aye. I oppose.
Next is a rezoning request for Freedom's Image LLC. This property is on Stump Ridge Road. Uh, Freedom's Image is seeking to rezone 241.63 acres from A1 to RE1. That's an aerial view of that property. Uh, they plan to develop the property for residential home sites. Uh, they have a preliminary plat laid out here along Stump Ridge for 12 lots. It's Liberty Landing Phase 2. It's a 39.23 acre development. 10 of the lots are three acres or larger, the other 10 contain two acres. All of the lots will have frontage on Stump Ridge Road. Covenants for the subdivision list the minimum heated and cooled areas 2,400 square feet. And the remaining property, the 202.40 acres, um, is for future residential development. These are views of that property.
He's gonna sell all the front lots first.
Hey, but he's there for, for good.
And then these are just surrounding.
Um... It's probably the best development on that end of the county that I've seen. I'd say the average house out there is 3,000 square foot.
What are they gonna do after they develop across the front?
They gonna put a road in and keep developing. He's there for good.
Yeah.
He's not, he's from here.
No, I'm just saying.
And, we have, sorry. Who is it? Uh-uh. Okay. Uh... We've had some, I think...
I'm not sure.
I think, uh, you have had a call or two, or about dump trucks. Uh, there's no trucks allowed on the blacktop. We've got a no-truck sign where peo-, where people live is blacktop because of the developer and Mike working out an arrangement when they developed up to that point. Now, we're going further, and we're gonna have another arrangement for the developer to help build the road. But nobody lives on the gravel portion where the dump trucks are running. There's no house. They can go up and out without going on the blacktop.
So, it won't be any tearing of...
Right.
The road up, yeah.
Take a motor right there.
Right.
Right.
Right. Uh... Well, I'm gonna regress and make a motion to set it. It's a great development.
Second.
Motion by Steve, sets this public hearing. Second by Brad. Any more discussion? Not all papers, aye. I oppose. Okay.
Next is a rezoning request for Freedom's Image LLC. This property is off of Stump Ridge Road. They're seeking to rezone 147.79 acres...
This is some of the rest of that.
Oh, oh, is that the same guy?
From AE1 to RE1. Uh, the property again will be used for future development of residential home sites. And, um, that's an aerial view of that property. And this just shows the access where it's gonna come in off of Stump Ridge Road.
Again, this guy has taken, cut over land and made it really prosper, I mean, for, for everybody in the county. Taxes and development. Um... Harrison.
I'm glad to see it.
He works with y'all, don't he? I mean, you trust him enough that he helps build the roads, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, I make a motion to set it.
Motion set to public hearing by Steve, second by Daniel. All papers, aye. I oppose. Okay.
Alright, the last item is a rezoning request. This is a Rankin County initiated rezoning request on Old Pearson Road and Peggy Drive.
Gotcha.
Uh, we are initiating a zoning change from MHP to RE1A for 19 parcels located on Old Pearson and Peggy Drive. These parcels are located north and east of the Old Pearson Road Mobile Home Park. This is the park right here. Uh, the park is situated on a 5.50 acre parcel. It's zoned MHP and will remain MHP. The 19 parcels that are outlined here are owned by individuals, and they have a mix of manufactured homes and site-built homes. Uh, we've had an application come in for someone who wanted to build a site-built home on one of these parcels. And we also had, uh, somebody who called about maybe moving a home out there. Not a manufactured home, but, you know, a home that was built somewhere else and being relocated.
How they getting in? How they coming in on that, off of Old Pearson and the road that's already there?
They either coming in off of Old Pearson or Peggy. Peggy Drive, you talking about the parcels that we've highlighted?
Yeah, I mean, how, how they getting into that property? 'Cause you come in off of, uh, Old Pearson off Peggy Drive.
They're coming through Peggy.
Peggy? And you go around and go all the way back to the back? Is that where that land is? You go, you go in, you come down that road, mobile homes, and maybe a house built. Regular house, and then you make the curve, it's on back behind there?
Yeah. The dead ends at the hip-hill fence.
I was gonna say, it's gonna go right to there, yeah.
That's the actual park right there.
Alright.
So, uh, anyway, uh, the RE1 classification would allow site-built homes. It would also allow for manufactured homes as a conditional use permit. And it would, uh, keep our map, uh, consistent because it has RE1A on both sides of Old Pearson.
They're gonna build a house, not more mobile homes.
Well, the people that have inquired want to build two site-built homes, but it would allow for a manufactured home, but they'd have to go through the conditional use process.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, 'cause some of them in there are not the best.
Well, these are surrounding properties.
Well, you can just make it, make it all homes. Yeah. You can just make it.
Could, you could if you, if that was what you wanted to do, but I mean...
The only difference that would be is that mobile homes would not be allowed. The, the mobile homes that are there would be grandfathered, would be allowed to stay. But in the event one is destroyed or moved, you would not be allowed to go back. So...
You'd just have a pocket of RE1 in there.
It just really depends, uh, you've got a density of MHP, right Renee? Just to say.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
Okay, so the, here's the thinking behind it. It would be more of a transitional phase before you got back to the RE1A component, which is northern there. So, you could have a transitional RE1 in that segment right there.
I'm okay with that. Yeah, I'm alright, gonna try that. Don't think you'd get that much pushback.
Okay, so if y'all just...
Now, the road. Okay, and I, I'll figure this out myself, that's okay. We don't drag this on. That's good, I'm good, I'm, uh, I make motion sets to public hearing.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by, uh, Steve. All papers, aye.
Aye.
Are we gonna set it for RE1? Is that what we're gonna do?
Which one did you own?
RE1. No, yeah.
I mean, there'll be peop-, um, that's fine, but, you know, there is RE1A that's all around it. Those people would be allowed to bring a mobile home.
I know, well, well...
It's a conditional use. I mean, it still gives you control over it.
I'd kinda clean that, that new section up back in there.
Let's leave it like it is. We just knew what we did.
Yeah, I'd like to try to clean that up in there, 'cause some of that's kind of unwanted as it stands.
So, RE1?
Yep.
Okay, so... We'll have to re-advertise, won't we?
Yes, ma'am.
No, yes, yes, we will.
We told them RE1A.
Yes, so we will.
Okay.
So, essentially, that's a...
So, we don't even set public hearing now?
No rush on this, and I know, uh, so let's just, let's restart the process, Renee, I apologize.
Is it holding people up from building?
That's the thing, we've already got an application for somebody who wants to build a house.
If they build a house.
Stick to it, so... I, I'm, I'm okay with us just going to RE1, 'cause what they're proposing to put there is gonna fill the parks.
But what she's saying, we're holding these people up from building, what is it, act now or something?
Go ahead and move forward.
I didn't hear what you said.
As the process is going.
But just go ahead and move forward with...
The permit?
Yeah, permits on both two.
Yeah, 'cause it, that would, that's gonna fall in RE1.
What we're doing on the zone side is not gonna tighten that.
Contingent.
Either way.
We proved we're contingent to...
We have an issue, but since voters think so, I don't see any reason to hold them up. Let's just go ahead and let issue the permits, and then we'll set this rezoning matter according to our own schedule.
You okay with that, Renee?
Yes, sir. If that's the way y'all want it, yes.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it won't hold them up from building.
No, I mean, technically, right now, it's MHP, but, so it would be okay to go ahead because we anticipate changes coming.
You might communicate to them that there could be an issue. If we get objections, and the board then determines not to take action on the rezoning and leave it like it is, there could be an issue, so you give them that option.
Go ahead and invest your whole life savings out here. But it may be an issue.
But I, I don't want us to tell them that it's solid.
I think...
Worst-case scenario is they come back, really protest the RE1 to an RE1A.
And we'll listen.
And we can clean that up, yeah. I, I'd like, I think they, especially the people that are now building back there, I think they would appreciate it being what... It wouldn't be that, put us, them in that position to say, no, we don't want this stuff right beside us. You know, if it was RE1A, and they're gonna build a home, and then someone comes in with a, right over here beside them, want to put that in there. So, I think this would help protect them, so, okay. Alright.
Jared, can I inject Leroy Kirsch right here? He, they, they're, him and his...
Oh, okay.
Cousin, they, they, uh, they won't talk to us about putting a trailer over on Andrew Chapel.
Is this on, on this?
No, it's not. Uh, we would have to wait until we got all the way over to other...
I mean, I don't care.
And, and it really, the...
This, this got to do with this stuff anyway, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't mind.
Come on, man. She's got a deed.
Hey, do you wanna make a motion to put it on the agenda?
Yeah, make, let me make a motion, uh, it's not Leroy, Leroy, your cook.
Let's hear what we got, and then we forget how we're gonna put it on the agenda, how about that?
Yeah. Alright.
This is my cousin here, and she trying to, uh...
Be no more, just a discussion.
Hey Leroy, it's hard to understand you sometimes.
Okay, okay.
Now, that's better.
Okay, okay. Yeah, 'cause I can't talk no way.
You talk, but I just can't understand it sometimes.
But this is my cousin, um, and she trying to get a brand-new note, mobile home, right there below the water tower there on Andrew Chapel Road. She had got access all the way out to the road, and she got enough, uh, property to, it won't be no problem for put a treatment plant and have her line running, everything. And follow, you know, all the instruction and detail to what given, and so, uh, that's why we meeting up here late to see what can she do to get, you know, a, a new mobile home.
I think it needs, the property needs to be rezoned, I think. Isn't that what the issue is?
Wait a minute, um, has somebody else recently just put a mobile home there?
Or they got approved? They back on the back.
Is it the same property?
Uh, 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 no, he got his own acre back there. She, she bought, uh, some property, she bought.
I like it, he just go to Renee, sorry.
On that same piece that came out, where there's already one double-wide, and then we've approved another one. And the conditions were that there would be no more manufactured homes on that property. I think it was five acres or so originally.
I do remember, I don't remember this specific, specific property, but, and it may, I may be...
So, now you're gonna have three?
This is just a family.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we work with them.
It is, was it, is that her name, Addie Mitchell?
Uh-huh, I'm her niece.
Yeah, oh, okay, Addie Mitchell.
How do you wanna add this to the agenda then?
So, what was the name of the fellow that just got approved?
Make a motion.
Her son, Darryl Mitchell, he's a truck driver.
Yeah, okay.
I just know they're good people. They're good people. I don't, I mean, I don't know, I just wanna add it to the agenda and, and work with them.
Well, just, uh, what's, what's your name?
What's her name?
Phyllis Mitchell.
Huh?
Phyllis Mitchell.
Phyllis Mitchell?
Right.
Alright, I make a motion to add, uh, discussion of, uh, putting a, uh...
Mobile home.
Manufactured home on...
Andrew Chapel.
Andrew Chapel, uh, for Phyllis Mitchell.
Yep.
Okay.
And it will be a new, it will be a new home.
Be newer.
Alright, motion, motion by, uh, Steve, second by...
Second.
Jay.
Alright.
Add this to the agenda.
It's to the agenda, I make a motion that we work with them...
All papers, aye.
Oh, I make a motion, we work with them to allow her to put this new mobile home in. Alright, no more.
Okay.
Just those three.
Three, that's three.
You've already got the acreage.
And y'all own, you own acreage.
Own it.
Okay.
You recently got it divided down.
Yes, ma'am, I've got everything on my phone for you, I'll need to see it.
They got road fundage.
Road fundage.
Yeah, they got road fundage.
But let me ask a couple of...
Just a minute, yeah, go ahead.
Let me ask a couple of questions, just to make sure.
Lawyer starts talking.
No, I, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, I just wanna make sure the process works.
I'll be in front of the new one, my office right here, and I will be right beside her, and the other one is in the back.
Hey, let's, let's see what attorney gets there.
I wanna make sure that we're clear about what we're doing here. Um, Renee, is this a conditional use situation? Okay. Um, Steve, my thought would be, and, and your motion is let's work with them, so the process would allow for that to happen, uh, to, to, to get us to a point where it happens.
I know, and I don't mean to step on their toes.
Right.
I know this family, I know they're good people. I know they're gonna do right.
Yep. Excellent. So, the process would be, get with Ms. Renee's group, so now it's a new consideration under, uh, Section 4 of the Planning Commission. Steve just made sure it got put there, and his motion is gonna be to set it, right? So, we will set a conditional use application, okay? That's the process. So, Steve just said, I want that to be set, and I want the process to move forward where that, what you're needing to do or wanting to do will happen. So, get with Ms. Renee, and she will help you get the conditional use application filed with her office, and then it'll be set, I would assume, Renee, do we have time?
August 2nd, August 2nd.
Okay, alright, so, it's, uh, August 2nd would be our hearing date for the conditional use. Steve, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
That's a pretty fast turnaround on that.
Yeah, sure.
So, you, you'll file documents, Ms. Renee has some things she has to do. That will happen, and then on August the 2nd, at the hearing on August the 2nd, the board will vote, more than likely at Steve's request, to give you a conditional use, and then you will get your permit to place that home, okay?
I don't know, though, it's a possibility, it may not. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
No, I, I don't anticipate any issues, we already have a couple of units out there, so I don't anticipate...
Golly.
Right. That's right.
They got three family members...
Right.
On family land.
Correct.
And, I mean...
So, so if there's...
We, we family.
If there's any confusion about why we would have a rule that says no more units on that property...
We just don't have room.
And then we said, oh, we'll, we'll do one more, it's because the rule was set by this board...
Yeah.
Right? And this board has the discretion to lift the rule, to change the rule, and then put another rule down. So, they're just doing what they have the discretion to do, just in case anybody's thinking, this is a weird deal here where we said no more, but we're gonna let one more. They can do that. They have the right to do that. So, Steve believes that we ought to do that on this occasion. Doesn't mean they do it every time?
So, don't go tell everybody.
Well, there's nobody else that can tell that shit.
Friends and neighbors and everything.
This is it.
Since it is out there in the public, we need a little bit of, of, uh, help understanding what we're doing here.
We just spread it everywhere, I mean, that's what's gonna happen.
Alright.
We voted on Steve, so it's set for August 2. That's the only notice that anybody's gonna get, okay? It'll be in the newspaper, but the notice is, come back on August the 2nd, and this board will hear the conditional use application, alright?
Alright.
Well, I, I appreciate y'all, and, and I will make, I will make sure that you do the right thing. If you don't, that you...
Alright. Bye, y'all.
Alright.
Kathy, don't be mad at me. Don't be mad at me.
Alright, moving on. Let's see, so we don't have any kind of site plan or architectural review of any kind?
No, sir.
Alright, nuisance properties.
This may go quickly, I don't know if anybody's out there waiting or not. First nuisance consideration is the Jimmy Allen nuisance property, 1064 Leesburg Road, District 4. I guess somebody will check to make sure that Mr. Allen is not here, or does not intend to participate.
Well, the door's open.
Alright, so we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos, and we'll see if Mr. Allen is, or someone representing Mr. Allen is here.
Alright, so, um, we received a complaint on this property on February 3rd. It was in regard to inoperable vehicles, rubbish, and debris. Um, wait a minute, I'm sorry. My assistant gave me the wrong one.
This is DM, eh?
Oh, okay.
Alright, so, these pictures were taken on May the 7th. Uh, we received a complaint on May 7th about rubbish and debris, grass, and operable vehicles. We've worked this property before.
Set it.
Get second. Declare the nuisance.
Yeah, whatever you want.
Wait a minute, somebody, is this, uh, is this them?
Steve, Steve made a motion to, uh, no, tho- those are, those are the next two considerations, Steve, I don't believe that Mr. Allen is Jimmy, Jimmy Allen, is Jimmy Allen...
Okay, alright, let's just move on then. Set it, or, or...
Declare the nuisance?
Yep.
Alright, uh, motion, Mr. Gaines, declare the seducents.
Second.
Uh, second by Jay, all papers, aye. I oppose.
Is he going to justice court?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
For the record, that hearing is closed. Item 2 is the Bruce and Vanessa Hollingsworth nuisance property, 1550 Monterey Road. This will be a District 3 property.
Actually, it's Jared's property.
It's District 1.
That's the one side of the road it's on.
Okay.
It does.
Alright.
Brad got out that real quick.
We will... We will open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photographs, uh, either Bruce or Vanessa Hollingsworth, or someone representing them, and begin making their way to the podium.
Alright, so we received a complaint January 5th, inoperable vehicles, rubbish, and debris, dilapidated storage building. The mail was received, Kathy received a call from the owner that asked for several months to clean up the property. So, these pictures were taken January 5th.
January?
Yes, sir.
Wait, January?
January 5th, 2014. And these are the new pictures that were taken, uh, today. Oh, yesterday, yeah, today's the 1st.
Shit, I'm saying nothing wrong.
Okay.
That looks better than my house.
Looks like you done a pretty good job straightening it up.
Well, yeah.
The pickup truck belongs to my dad. It was totaled by my daughter, just haven't got it moved yet.
Yep. I bought my daughter car when she was 16 years old, and she wrecked it six months later.
Guess she ain't six months.
I know.
Yeah, uh, no, it looks like you, uh, what do y'all, if you being out there, they done significant cleanup, what'd you say?
Well, that building looks like it still needs to come down.
Come on.
Well, I don't know, tell me about the building.
It did have some termite damage to the rafters. I got two internal rafters that dropped with that hole.
Right.
Uh, we tried to cover it up until I can get in there and work on it.
Yeah.
Uh, and I apologize, I work nights with the hospital and.
Flashback at it, you know, my, my, right?
Okay.
The building that you're talking, we're talking about.
This building?
I don't know, that one.
That one.
Yeah.
And I've closed the door and access to it where nobody can get in.
Right, I, yeah, I think you done a good job, I, I could show you something worse than that. Don't you know, we don't ride around and look for this stuff, somebody's complaining, somebody's complaining. But you done a, a good job cleaning it up, and just kinda keep it, continue and keep it, uh, cleaned up, and if, if you can get some improvements on that, or if it gets worse now, if it does get worse where it's a, a health safety hazard, you know, they're gonna complain, we're gonna probably have to have.
Yes.
Do something, so try to get something under there.
I intend to get some improvements done to it just quick as I can, but it's just been a slow process.
I understand, okay, all right, I appreciate you, I just gonna close this.
My, my suggestion would be to, for the record, reflect no actions taken.
Right, we're just, we're just gonna monitor it, see if somebody else, if somebody else complains, we'll tell them we're watching it, and everything, I appreciate you.
And we'll have that truck gone before long, so I wonder about that.
Appreciate you doing what you did, thank you.
Thank you.
I.
For the record, that matter is closed.
You go, thank you.
Okay, item three, gentlemen, if we're ready to move forward, is the Ronnie and India Jones nuisance property, one thirty-seven Rankin Cove, it's a District Four property, I think. We'll open that public hearing, we'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos, either Ronnie or India Jones can move forward to the podium.
All right, we received this complaint February third, inoperable vehicles, rubbish and debris. Uh, the certified mail was received and the owner called. These were those pictures taken February fourth. And these are the news, new pictures that were taken yesterday.
Look good.
I think that they called.
I've been working hard.
It looks.
Looks a lot more better.
The other vehicles would be removed on Tuesday, I believe, July the sixth.
Where's India at?
We appreciate the two coming in, looks like we're just back to back, they really got out, tried to do something.
Thank you.
Makes, makes it easy.
Vehicles in the back, doesn't really belong to me, they was belonged to somebody else, but he contacted Neil from Old Hell's towin', and they gonna come get them. It's just a matter of drying up so they can get to them.
Good deal.
Thank you, sir.
Cause it'll wind up still coming back to you if they don't.
I make a motion, we handle exactly the same ways as last.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion.
Motion by Steve, uh, is closed.
Yes, for the record, that matter is also closed.
Okay, second by Brad, any more discussion? No, all papers say aye, all opposed, thank y'all. Okay.
The last thing we had was just a discussion, uh, about adopting the twenty eighteen international building codes. Brian had prepared a list of significant changes, uh, in the code for y'all, and you've got the handout up there with the significant changes.
I had read them.
Yeah, well, this is just kinda to start the ball rolling. We'd like to adopt it, hopefully maybe August or September. Brandon, I think, is looking to adopt the twenty eighteen, uh, Pearl is already in it, I believe.
So what, can y'all hit the high points, the things that are, uh, so I don't have to read all these?
Brian can, yes, sir.
All right.
Yeah, a lot of these things we're already, kinda already doing now.
You need to come on podium, say your name and where you're looking.
Yeah, we, we've tried to implement some of this slowly, so it's not just a shocker. Uh, so a lot of this we are doing now, um, thank you, ma'am.
A lot of this we are, we are doing now, um, s- some of it, um, w- we may be, I'm not saying we're doing all these, uh, this is just what the code says the changes are, we may be, we, we may amend some of these. Uh, it, these are things that we're gonna talk to the builders about, um, but, you know, we are two code cycles removed. I mean, this is eight, eighteen, we're in the twelve now, so there has been a few changes to the codes in the last, you know, we're in, we're not adopting the twenty twenty that's coming out, we're just, you know, doing the eighteen, so. Th- these are some of the things that we probably need to be moving toward doing.
How much difference is the eighteen to the twenty you're talking about, is it a lot?
The twenty.
Changes?
I don't know, I haven't gotten into the twenty-one as much, but I have been talking to a lot of the representatives from ICC, International Code Council, about, uh, the eighteen, and they, um, recommended the eighteen code, um, so.
A lot of ti- a lot of times you don't wanna jump too quick on the code stuff, like you don't wanna get too far ahead. A lot of people usually stay two cycles behind the code stuff, so you don't wanna jump too fast.
Yeah, I don't wanna run into something that where we're doing some major changes and we don't know what, we're not prepared for it. This, the eighteen's been out a few years, um, so I, I feel more comfortable.
Are we?
Moving to the eighteen.
Are we ahead, or, I get these builders.
Yeah.
Telling me, and I don't bring it to you, and I don't bring it to you, because I trust y'all are doing the best thing, that we are out of line, that we are tougher than even the city of Madison.
I get it all the time.
Are we, is that just because, I mean, are they just out of line complaining, or is that true?
We, we have a, we have a lot of builders that just complain about everything, uh, we work with all builders, uh, I don't know.
But I'm talking about not, not personal, this is not.
They talking about nitpicking things.
I'm talking about code stuff.
We don't, we don't nitpick, if we do, I need to know about it, um, we're doing, I mean, most of our inspections, you know, are life safety things, but if there's things that we see that needs to be addressed, then we do, but as far as nitpicking, I would say no, um, that, that's.
But I mean, are our codes stronger?
No.
Than, no, okay, Jay, Jay, Jay's an inspector.
Well, no, Madison, the city of Madison, I guarantee you that our, our inspectors aren't near as tough as the city of Madison.
That's what they love to hear, we, we're not as strong as the city of Madison, they hate to be compared that way.
I said tough.
Okay, I mean, I, I don't get calls that our personnel is rude, or not doing their, that's not what I'm talking about. They are complaining just because they don't wanna go that far.
Yeah, a lot of it's because they have to spend money, um, but.
I mean, that's the way I think, that, that we're not any tougher than anybody else, we're just going by the code.
Well, I can tell you that, I mean, I've got, I can give you names, uh, that, most of the builders that I talk to, say that Rankin County is the most pleasant place that they have built a house in.
Good.
Um, most, most positive, I mean, mostly everything we go through is positive, but, um, yeah, we're gonna have the builder every once in a while that is gonna have a.
And that's the one that calls me.
But, and, and, but I take it very.
Been building here.
Yeah, I mean, I take this very personal, um, so, I, I've, I've worked in other jurisdictions before.
Yeah.
And I will say that Rankin County, um, had a long way to go to get to this point.
Yeah.
Um.
But we're getting there.
But, yeah, yeah, but we're there, we build a good house in Rankin County, we don't go over the top, I don't believe.
I appreciate the whole, y'all take more, well, you and the road department take more crap than, than I could ever put up with, and I thank y'all for handling it like you do. Uh, I've never had, I mean, nothing but good things said about you, um, and, and I'm in the office, can't, nobody can, it's never personal. It's they don't wanna do what the code, what the book says.
I do think the county would be proud of what we're doing out here.
Oh, Lord.
I, I, I think.
There's a reason that Rankin County is one of the fastest growing counties in the South.
And, and we're trying to set a standard.
Yeah.
Um, of what we expect.
Thank you.
Here, and I, I, like I said, I believe that overall, it's been a very positive.
Yes, sir.
Um, transition to where we were, to where we are, um, but like I said, I take this very personally, I mean, I, I.
I know you do.
I do a, I do a plan review, uh, with every homeowner, um, that comes in, I, I give them, I give them a heads up, and, and one of the first things I tell them is, if you'll, if you'll listen to me and you'll follow these instructions, there, you, you'll spend less money.
Yeah.
And there'll be less time that you have issues, uh, you know, we, we try to make it as easy as possible for these builders slash homeowners to build their homes.
Yeah.
So these updates that we're wanting to go to, are all of our inspectors on top of it, they know all this?
Uh, this is, like I said, we're going to be training on this, uh, in the future, uh, and also, and I, and I told, I've told the builders, this is something that we're going to slowly transition into. If we have a problem, if, if we see something, we're gonna give you an, you know, we're gonna give you a chance to, hey, look, the next time, we need to see something different.
So what's the big one we gonna hear about?
I think the big ones you're gonna see is electrical stuff.
What you gonna hear about is one fifteen, one hundred to one hundred and fifteen mile an hour.
I think so, what's that gonna do, Brian, as far as?
Most of our, well, most of our engineered, um, trusses that we get in, uh, de- designed buildings are already at the one hundred and fifteen anyway. We're behind.
But these metal buildings are.
Some of that wiring issues.
These.
These metal buildings are.
Well, I'm just saying, from the, the new, the, the two thousand fifteen to the two thousand eighteen, they've just upgraded that, we've been in the twelve, the twelve's at a hundred. You know, the new code has changed it.
Uh, barn dominiums, are they at a hundred and fifteen?
Yes, yes, sir.
They already are?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Every, they don't have to be, but they exceed the code anyway because the engineers are already.
Engineer stamp.
They're already stamping these at one fifteen.
If it's a dwelling, it's gonna have to comply with this code, now, keep in mind, a, a pole barn's not a dwelling.
Well, we ain't talking about a pole, pole barn now, I'm talking about what, like that five thousand square foot hall.
That clearly is a dwelling, it's got a kitchen, a bathroom, and a bedroom, so that, that immediately qualifies it as dwelling, it's gonna have to meet the code standards.
I don't wanna disqualify that type of construction out in the rural area.
Yeah, so what we're trying to get on top of is situations, and we've seen this in the past, where a structure comes online initially, in essence classified not as a dwelling, and you end up with chicken house trusses. And the next thing you know, it is a dwelling, but you've got substandard.
Yeah, that's what they do in Jay's district.
That's, that's what we gotta try to, uh, make sure that we're accommodating. My question was, would there be a, additional expense to the builders, significant expense to the builders to comply with the one fifteen standard, as opposed to the one hundred standard?
I would say no, because like, like I said, we're in the twelve, Pearl's already in the eighteen, um, Pearl River Valley, they're in the, I think they're in the twelve, but they're moving to the eighteen, um, City of Brandon is moving to the eighteen, so, uh, City of Ridgeland's in the fifteen. A lo- a lot of these contractors are already used to what we're proposing. And I've talked to them, I, I, I've talked to, I've talked to every builder in the county, I mean, the, these subcontractors, I've talked to them, and I'm, I'm letting them, and they're like, look, we're, we're already dealing with this, this is something, you know, this, you just tell us what you want, we'll take care of it. I mean, I, as far as.
I would just hope, I would just hope you have some, until they all get adjusted, some flexibility.
Yeah.
You know, a little bit of working into it.
That was my first discussion with the inspectors, is we're gonna have, there's gonna be plenty of time to get used to the, to the new code, plenty of time. Yeah, that, that, that will not be an issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, what do we need to do here? We just review? We're gonna look at it, we're just reviewing.
Improve it next, go on.
Okay.
And I'm not saying all of these are gonna be followed, we, we may do some amendments on some of the, some of the code, because some things are a, a bit silly, I think, uh, so we will, we're, we're gonna look at real world.
Yeah.
Issues here, so, um, I don't think we're gonna have too many problems, like I said.
All right.
A, a lot of this, we, we see, the, the builders are going above and beyond anyway, because they're just used to it.
All right.
Yes.
Okay.
Bring it back, next.
Sounds good.
Me, I'm off now, when we have this.
All right, let's, uh, that's all, let's see, we need to set, uh, recess. Anything, do you have anything else tonight? No? Okay, uh, most, is the next meeting be Thursday, July twenty-ninth, uh, most recess?
Make a motion.
Most recess for Brad, second by Daniel, all papers say aye, all opposed, okay, moving on to the, uh, Board of Supervisors meeting, right off that, we got Mike Harrison.
Uh-oh, I don't know what's happening, wait.
Call the orders this time, okay?
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, wanna talk to y'all a few minutes, uh, we got a discussion of Civil Link, just getting time to renew our plan and update it, uh, from where we was, uh, I've talked to Craig and Keith about this, uh, I think there's some things that we need to do some updating on, to get us a little further down the road for what we got coming up in the prior months. And what we're just trying to do was, and I'm not sure, I know me and Craig talked about it a little bit, might be some avenues of getting some money to pay for this, or make them out of budget, I have to let Craig kinda speak on that just a little bit.
I just had a couple of things on top of what you said, but.
Couple of thoughts that come to mind, we, you know, we had some bond, we used the bond money to sort of ramp up the, uh, the Civil Link plan, and move some, some, uh, items on the plan forward, uh, because we had the bond funds available to do so. Uh, and we spent a lot of time, effort and energy trying to make sure that we were on safe ground, using the bond money to attack the Civil Link issues, and so, uh, with that effort to try to prioritize and move some of the Civil Link activity forward, using the bond funds, it, it caused the schedule laid out in the original Civil Link plan to have to be adjusted. So some roads got attention kind of out of line with where they had originally been set, as far as activity was concerned, if that makes sense. So, for instance, a road that was scheduled for an overlay in year four of the plan, we had bond money available, it got moved up to year two instead of year four, so the schedule is now different, out of necessity, from what the original schedule called for. So I think what, what Mike is suggesting is, in order for the plan to be useful to us at this point, it would be helpful for Civil Link to provide, to provide us with an amended plan.
Updated.
That, that accounts for the fact that some of the roads now have been treated, some of the roads have been pushed around on the priority schedule. We need just to reflect that in the plan, so that the plan adequately addresses, well, what do we need to do from this point forward? Mike's comment about, um, there, there may be a way to pay for the amendment to the plan, there, there is that possibility, and we're working on that, and it, that could happen, I, I can see us having scenarios available to us where we can use some of the additional monies that are available to us, that would not be budgeted, directly budgeted funds, uh, for that purpose. We don't know that for certainty at this point, we can't say that to you guys in a way that, uh, that has any real clarity about it at this point. I wouldn't suggest that you count on that in any way, but, uh, but there is a reasonable opportunity for us to be able to use some of the other additional monies to actually pay for this update.
What, what was it, I mean, do we have ballpark figure on an updated?
We're looking at somewhere around one sixty, uh, Brad, and, I mean, I can do this a couple of different ways, we can, it's gonna take four to six week, four to six weeks to do the survey process, that's the field word.
They said they're gonna do it all over again.
Correct, and we'll have videos of all our roads that we done in the bond, uh, we talked about that, so if road gets damaged.
In the bond?
The roads.
What about those that we didn't do something in the bond?
They would be addressed in this new updated Civil Link plan, and would fall in line with additional activities in accordance with Civil Link plans, they, 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 some of the roads that were behind, other roads are gonna get moved up the list now.
The other, the other ninety percent.
But I want, I want them to look at every road.
Yes.
Including my gravel roads, I found another gravel road I didn't know I had yesterday.
Well, they do that, that's the thing, they do that, they do that, uh, they look at every road.
Amen.
Problem I got with it.
The driveway.
We did a lot of overlaying where it said it, it was gonna be chip seal, we didn't, uh, we're doing the same thing again, and I, I'm, I mean, I don't feel like we got, we, we gotta paid a hundred and sixty-five thousand, we paid another twenty-something, didn't we, for our book, later, came, the book came.
No, I think we paid more like two fifty. Originally?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, whatever, then we paid another something for a book, to show it all to us.
I don't remember, I just remember.
Yeah, and I, I mean, and you're right, you can, I mean, you look through there right now, roads that we're doing this to, said they're gonna do this to, and we just got all, a, a lot of things, supposed to have been chip sealed, got overlaid, and we got all messed up, I, personally, I don't know why our engineer, you and our engineer can't do just as good a job for that, the only way I'm, I'm for it is if there's some other money to pay for it, I don't wanna take it out of, out of general fund myself, that's me, cause I don't think we got, we got really a bang for our buck in it.
I think it was a good thing for me, I mean, I, the Civil Link plan gave me, I got so many streets and roads, it's hard to identify on the levels of deterioration, or, or how often they've been done, and things like that, so from the, the north half of the county, on my side of the road.
I would say, if we go back and look at what we've paid, our engineer, to do what he has done in the last year, has not rode every inch of every road, would be a lot cheaper, more economic, and I ain't talking about, I, I need backup, I'm not supposed to say ain't. I'm not talking about our engineering service in a bad way, they do a great job, and they're there when we call them, but the amount of money that we've paid. But the amount of money that we've paid for our engineers is way less than what we pay for these people to come in here. And I mean, they concentrate in about two or three weeks.
You said it's way less.
Well, no, 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 we would be way better.
Okay, you said.
Okay, way more, way more, way more. I'm sorry. If we were to pay our engineer and our road department to ride every inch and evaluate it, and they're not trained specifically in this, there's like ten different methods that you can do on one road. It's according on what degree of failure it's at. And I've learned so much in the last four years or more about these roads that you can save them when they're just about to, or you can wait and you can't save them. Sometimes spending money is not, I mean, I'm the most conservative guy in the county. I mean, I buy swept up feed to feed my cows, busted sacks at the co-op, you know.
Live on dirt road.
I live on a dirt road. Yeah, I do. But my end of the county has really been successful because of, uh, one of the reasons, I mean, one of them's development and the, and roads and schools. And the roads are so much better now than they were just five years ago. Uh, we're even, we've even paved about two miles of gravel road in the last five years. So, I, to me, when state went to Omaha, the coaches had a plan of who was gonna pitch. Who was gonna play. If you don't have a plan, you can't be successful. So, if it's not this plan, we need an, a plan. I mean, you got to have a plan with a goal and a target to get there. You may not always get there, but, okay.
You're exactly right. Jumped all around before.
Yep.
We, we, we did a lot of things, and I looked at the book. We were doing a lot of things that didn't call for that. And went on, we took the money out of the bond. We overlaid some areas that supposed to have been chip sealed and this thing. And, uh, I know. They're not gonna ride every road. I know, I mean, I know it's Tim and him, Kane, I understand that. And, uh, but in that, if you ride the roads, I think you know, well, as I do, I know some of the roads that they put down there, they don't realize. I think you, because you live there, you live wherever you live, you know your area, you know the roads that, that need, uh, more attention or, and, and after I looked at the way they had presented some things on the, on the plan before, I realized that they obviously are just riding the road. They don't realize that road gets that traffic.
It's not politics to them. It's just physical, looking at it.
I know.
They take the politics out. And when I get a call, I tell them, this is not political. And a third party has inspected it, that's a professional, and we'll get to it just as our plan. And I've never asked Mike or anybody on the road to veer from the plan. Never. Now, they may go out there and look at the road because it's two years after the plan was written and say, hey, we need to put a slurry or whatever on it, uh, that was not, and that's okay. But we got a plan.
Getting, getting to the plan itself, um, I mean, we know what roads got fixed through the bond. I mean, is there a way, they don't have to ride those roads. I mean.
They don't have, they don't have to ride the roads, yes. We've, we've got everything documented of where we did the road, what year we did it in, Brad. No, they do not have to ride those roads. And I've been mixed emotions of how, whether we ride those roads or not.
Yeah.
The only reason I said ride those roads, or my thought was to ride those roads, we just put bond money in that. So, that's supposed to last eight to ten years.
Good luck with that.
We've got a video of that road. If it gets tore up or somebody damages that road, we do got a backup video on that.
Keep in mind, as a development activity occurs on roads that we have overlaid, spent bond money to overlay. Uh, if, if we have evidence of a date certain and the status of the road on that date, we are in a much better position to be able to deal with.
I'm gonna do it all. I'm gonna do it all.
Lucedale, Lucedale, I mean, I saw a road matter down the coast, and I mean, they had some gas company, pipeline company come in, and I know they go through everything. They had the plan and tore up the road, and they wanted to argue with it. Their lawyer was able to follow, brought back on their plan, took a video of what the road looked like prior to them starting. I mean, cost them a million dollars.
When's the last time? We've done twice now, right?
Done one time, Jay, and.
I thought they came back and did more.
No, that's where you got the book.
Okay, so we've had one snapshot.
I think they gave it to us in phases. And then they came back with a, they gave us a temporary report, and they came back with all the other details.
So, how many years ago was it when we did it?
Going in our fourth, we're in our third year going in our fourth year. This book cycle will be on.
No, when did they come take the snapshot last time? How many years has it been?
Sixteen, seventeen, or whatever, eighteen.
So, you're gonna do it now, so you're saying?
We knew every four to five years we was gonna have it. They told us that upfront.
That's what I'm asking. If he's planning on doing this again after, after this.
Look at it and see where we at, Jay. But I mean, we got impacted by the ice storm this year. It changed up our roads quite a bit from the plan. I mean, and it's just like Greg said, yes, we had the Civil Link plan with the overlay. That's the only place we spend it. I mean, we did roads in, in year four that, you know, that's the way we had to push with it. So, we kinda really changed our plan up. I mean, we're working on the plan now, but I'm still doing roads in year one, trying to catch up because when I put this plan together, that was before we really, we did the bond and we did move the cash around on my end of the budget.
Right, well, we were spending additional dollars.
I had this thing set up to spend about six and a half million dollars a year, and we're not spending.
So, you need to get this done so you can budget, get it allocated appropriately.
That's exactly right.
Hey, Mike, what's your?
This helps you, this helps you set a budget for you.
Mike, what's, uh, what's your timeframe on them getting it done, starting? We get it approved today?
Four to six weeks on the, uh, survey, Daniel.
So, by the fall, you could have a report in hand?
Yeah, and what I was looking at is, is trying to get the survey done. That's gonna fall in the budget talks and stuff. When we'd be talking about budget. And once we settle in the budget, then we can do the other step with the spreadsheet and putting it all on documentation. And when I go into that, I need to know where we're gonna be in on road budget. That's really what makes the plan work, is you don't know what your dollar figure is. Your budget, ten million dollars, and you don't use your five.
All right, so. Harris, what do you need today? Approval?
If, if y'all agree to it, I mean, that's, that's, I'm, I'm putting that kinda toward y'all. I mean, we do work on a plan that does help us.
Well, I wanna, I wanna clear up, Steve, about what I was saying. It doesn't do politics at all. It just, I, at all, you talking about, takes the politics out. I don't ever put the politics in it. What I'm talking about is a road they have down there for something, and it doesn't get traveled nearly enough to, to acquire what they're saying be on, it's a waste of money to put on it, cause, but then you got a road, just a through road, and they had like a chip seal on it. And it gets heavy traffic constant. It's just that they don't know the, the traffic on that road, just like in some of your district. I'm sure the same thing. They don't know that. They're just riding the road and looking at that road. They don't know the, the capacity that road carries.
The plan has to be flexible enough to account for things like an ice storm, like a bond issuance. And by the way, that was the flexibility piece that we used. Don't forget, your bond lawyer stood right here, that's not me, your bond lawyer stood right here and explained to you, you're not gonna use bond money to put chip seal down. It's not happening.
Had to be asphalt.
Won't work. It's got to be overlay. Why? You have to have useful light. Bond statute requires that. So, we asked the question, why would we overlay a road that called for chip seal? Do you want to use the bond money to do it or not? That was the question. And because we wanted to use the bond money to pay for it, we had to overlay it. And so, it was different from what the plan called for, but there's flexibility in the plan. I think to Jared's point, which is a valid point, by the way, where you've got a neutral third party like this that may not have all of the information that could be available, might be available about how to classify a given road. That's where we have to step in and say, yeah, you know, it's calling for a micro, but that's not gonna work. That's not gonna work on that road, and here's why. So, the board can adopt a plan and say, this is the plan we're gonna follow, with the understanding that this board also, like we did just a few minutes ago, by saying, we're not gonna let another mow home. Oh, yes, we are. Same deal. You guys can say, I see that that called for a chip seal on that road, road, but it doesn't make sense for us to do that. We're not, we don't want a chip seal on that road. Do something different. And yes, there's gonna be additional costs to that, whatever. So, so there's flexibility there for the board. It's a plan. By the way, it's not a good, just a good idea. It's the law. Y'all have to have a road plan. So, this work will be the, all of the internal information that we have to have to classify that this board has adopted a road plan, because it touches and concerns every public road in the county. Why does it have to be flexible? Why do we need updates? Because Kelly Foster is developing all over Daniel's district. And so, every few months, we get a whole new set of public roads that we are now responsible for. And unless somebody is folding that into the plan, those roads are not gonna be accounted for.
These are also developing in my district.
Yes, sir. So, development is happening everywhere. Fortunately, in Steve's district, the vast majority of the development is happening on already existing public roads. So, they're gravel. We know about them. But y'all, y'all understand what, what, I, I'm not lobbying that you necessarily spend county road funds to update a plan if y'all don't feel like that's necessary. That's not what I'm talking about. But the, the fact that we have a plan that is out of date now in a good way suggests that it wouldn't be useful to us to try to operate within that plan. That plan is out of date. So, if we're gonna operate with a plan, we need to update the plan. The issue that I see is, can we figure out a way? I think we can, to be able to pay for this out of monies available that are not budget money.
And I've got, and I mean, the way I plan on doing the plan, I can, I can cover it in my budget right now. Cause I'm gonna do half the plan right now, and we'll be working on the other half of the plan come October. I have the plan ready by January. I'm just making it, I'm trying to get things started while it's not right, because this is the time.
You think you're gonna pay for it?
In the meantime, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, where?
With funds that are at our disposal, but have not been.
I'm okay with you paying for those funds, otherwise, I'm not.
There's, yeah, there's gonna be more CARES Act or whatever funds for, uh, this type of stuff.
Here's my thing. I, I don't want to delay on it. I think the Civil Link plan is important. I think it's critical to the planning of the fall, getting the next year going. I, I don't care if we pull it out of general, if you come out of road, if you split the pavements up, however you want it done. I'm for moving on it now to get it going and get it done, so.
Thing is, we're not gonna be able to budget the amount of money he's talking for, about for that.
Hundred sixty thousand?
No, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking a hundred fifty. I'm talking about the money, don't budget for that mass amount of overlay.
That number did a big one. So, we sit down and talk about.
That, that number's impossible to get budgeted for anyway.
Yeah, we.
I mean, doesn't matter if we had a Civil Link plan or not. Mickey Mouse writes one. You mean, you can't, we can't, we can't budget it anyway.
If you can't budget for it, then you're not gonna be able to do it.
Here, here, Harris, here's what I wanna do. I wanna set a plan to approve Civil Link, get it moving immediately. And if we pull it out of road, Keith, or we pull it out of general, I don't care. I want it moving. Do we get the plans?
Larry may have, Larry may have enough left over.
Send Larry, Larry sends some money over to us. But my motion is to start it immediately.
Can I, can I suggest that in the motion, if I may, that we state clearly in there that we want, we want it to be determined before we obligate budget money. We want it to be determined whether or not other funds could be made available.
That's what I'm saying, why, yeah, this immediately right now. We're still, we're tailing in on the rest of the whole plan now.
So, here, here's my thing. My motion is just what Gaines says, if, I mean, uh, Mike said, just, what's your name again?
We'll get there in a minute. Daniel gets a pass.
When Mike unbuttoned his shirt, that top button raised my conversation. I keep really focused on what's that, so.
Dan, you wanna add it, right?
We, I, I don't know, I need to, it says discussion. Do I need to add it to the agenda? My, so my motion is to add the Civil Link plan to the agenda. That's my first.
To what way?
To approve.
Okay, and approve what, though?
To approve the, uh, I guess the right wording is. For a hundred sixty thousand dollars for the analysis or to perform the Civil Link plan to evaluate the roads in the county and with the, and with the stipulation. And with the stipulation, that if Slay can identify money or funds, that we'll go for it. That's fine. If not, it comes directly out of either the road budget or comes out of the general side of it, Keith. One of those two spots. But I want the plan to start through my budget. So, that's what I'm adding to the agenda.
All right, Daniel's made a long list of adding this to the agenda. And Brad is seconded. So, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Or opposed?
All right, so with that same thing, I'll make a motion to approve the same motion I just made. Now, Slay, do I need to add anything else to that?
I wanna, I wanna add one thing to it. If one of us wants to change from the plan, it needs to come before the board. We don't need to be out there.
Well, Steve, we've been doing that the whole time.
Well, let's just keep it that way.
It didn't come before the board. It changed everywhere. You can't come, you can't do that because it, it went, it started changing as soon as we started doing it. You may have not known, but I mean, it did. So, you can't very well go, we're gonna wait. We can't do this road till we get the board to say okay.
If I could suggest that you will have an opportunity upon completion of your updated plan to adopt it. And my suggestion would be, at that time, y'all discuss, how are we going to actually operate this plan? So, you're gonna have an opportunity to adopt your amended Civil Link plan, Steve.
Well, I'm not voting for it, so how are you gonna do that?
Well, you don't have to. It won't have to be three.
I'm not gonna vote for it.
Okay.
So, I've already said, I'm not for it.
So, you've got my motion that's out there.
Well, that's fine. I saw, fine. I'm just saying, if you throw this in there that we're not gonna do something unless, and I'm not voting for it, then what's that gonna do here?
So, I, I, that's why I'm suggesting that.
Not voting for the budget, still getting money just like you did.
It has no difference.
All right, no difference, right. You got everything.
Cause basically, once there's three votes, that's the plan that runs down the road.
But I don't, I don't agree with having to come back to the board to get some change. But we, that's been, it's been changed since day one.
So, it's, my suggestion would be this, Steve, if you, if you are willing to defer on this with your, your amendment to Daniel's motion, it would be that we wait and take up that matter about how we're going to actually operate the plan at the point in time when you guys adopt.
I defer.
All right, so Daniel's motion.
I didn't know it was gonna be that heated.
Jessica, read, read my motion back to me. So, that's my motion. Whatever Jessica wrote down.
Okay, he, uh, and, okay, the motion to approve Daniel's motion.
I got blindsided. Mike, there's some, like, six little roads off of Andrew Chapel that they inspected. I'm gonna say the longest one was a quarter mile, and they took care of them. They had a contractor. I didn't know that they went, they, I think they called for some other method, but they went, because they were failing, and they put some asphalt down. And I remember, y'all, I was surprised. I didn't even know it. So, that's why I'm saying.
I understand, I understand what you're saying.
I won't, because I didn't know.
But the reason he said he did it, in the same way with Baron Lane, and I steered him about Baron Lane. And it, they love it. Two houses on it. And it's just like you said, it's just like you said, it ain't, uh, it ain't a quarter mile long. But they, they, we chip sealed this road that's been, that gets run, traffic, 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 and they drive by. And you know, if you wanna talk about politics, that's what it looked like. Oh, but you asphalted Baron Lane that goes down.
Oh, I, I don't, maybe nobody on any of those roads voted for me.
No, what I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just giving you an example.
I'm not, but I don't do that.
The reason, the reason, the reason to do it, the reason for doing it was he said, uh, it's to cost too mu, it's easier just going to asphalt it rather than coming in a chip seal it. But that's my point. How do you, you talking about political side?
I want y'all to know everything that's going on in my district.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but I'm just saying. Well, that's what I'm saying, but I'm just saying, giving you the comparison, that's exactly right. But you, that asphalt, that little road, it doesn't go to anywhere. And I, it's hard to explain that to the person that drives down, uh, uh, old forty-nine, seven-day road that you chip sealed, that's got constant traffic and hundreds of houses on it. But you, you asphalted the little old road down there.
Highway forty-three.
But look, that's the same thing Gaines is saying.
State Highway forty-three, Penske to Puckett, it's chip sealed.
I'm saying, no, I'm just saying.
So, they don't get upset when they drive off.
And I guess that's, that's what Gaines is saying, once we get the civil link plan back, before we alter what the plan says, Mike's gonna walk in here and say, before we do Baron Road, or whatever road you mentioned, or forty-three or whatever, is this what the board wants to do? And then, three people in their infinite wisdom says, yes, this is what we wanna do, that's where it goes. So, the civil link plan puts it on paper, Mike still comes back.
For the plan, we need to vote to go away from the plan.
That's, that's right, if we're getting off of it, Mike comes back and we can.
We still doing, uh, Old Fan and Rock Road, isn't it?
Go ahead.
We're not?
No.
What, what's the plan?
We might do something to it, Jay.
Which, which road you asked?
It's not got.
Old Fan.
What road?
Old Fan?
Old Fan, we was planning on micro it this year, and that's fine example. On micro it, with the ice storm impacted, Old Fan worst. We'd have to do a scrub, scrub and a micro off.
Yeah.
And we looking at doing a scrub and ultra plan on, on fan. We got some rutting that's occurred through winter.
Yeah.
It's a little more than micro can handle.
Okay.
So, we're looking at some other options on it. It's one of those deals, it's a high-traffic area.
I mean, that's the, that's the highest traffic road we got in the county.
Hey, it's one of, this time.
We're about to lower it down on it, so.
I think stop bridges.
But, but yes, we're still looking, we're still looking at it, but I mean, that's, I mean, that's how much, three months can change a road. I mean, one rain event, one big ice storm can change a road to what it looks like.
All right, so Slade, I've got my motion, you second Gaines' vote, right?
Yep. I think, actually.
We added it, we've already added it. We voted to add it, now we're voting to approve it.
Yes.
All right, uh, motion approved by Daniel, second by, who was it, Steve?
Gaines or Brad, I don't know if I thought Brad did.
Brad.
I'll second.
All right, Brad, all favors, ah, or opposed, Nate?
Right.
Yes, sir, thank you, Chris.
All right, why are you up there, Mr. Slade, move on, you're already there.
Yes, sir. First item under my section is discussion of potential action to address damage to the North Shore Causeway Bridge guard rail that was caused by a motorist. We have the police report, uh, that we received from some, some patrol. Uh, no, no, sir, it was just a one-vehicle, one-vehicle accident. Uh, the, uh, the individual that caused the damage, uh, was arrested and charged. Uh, the police report indicates that there's insurance coverage, and so, my intention is to put the insured on notice and request that the matter be turned over to insurance. Here's why we need to have this discussion, it damaged the guard rail significantly. This is not the first time that this guard rail at North Shore Causeway has been damaged, it's been damaged in both directions of travel. It is subject to being fully repaired. So, I'm, I'm grateful that this particular incident occurred before that project has been let. Uh, we need to take immediate action to render what is now a jagged guard rail that's impacted the bike lanes. Uh, we need to go ahead and take action to, to render that safe.
What, to cut them out?
Yes, sir. And, and we need a temporary, temporary barrier installed so that we don't allow traffic to approach that abutment unprotected. So, and this would be a prelude to a full repair and restoration project that is.
So, are we shutting down the bike lane across here?
No, sir. What, what, I, I don't believe it can be traveled at the moment, Jay, because of the damage, it's been shut down by PRB. Uh, but what we wanna do is have a contractor go in and actually remove the damaged section and place temporary water-filled obstructions on the approach to that abutment so that it's safe for vehicle traffic until we can get the repair project.
Have we got our bid ready to go? I know we had to redo because of there was some material that we didn't expect to start with or something.
Call Tim, where's Tim?
I'm guessing he's, uh, dealing with the headache on a plane.
I talked to him, I talked to him, that's right.
So, wait a minute, do we, do we get to pay Chris for coming to this one meeting?
Yeah, Chris gets his big check.
Yeah, he gets, he gets Tim's.
And Tim gets deducted, that's right.
I'm gonna let Chris and Tim sort that out. Yeah, the, the plans for the new guard rail are pretty much ready to go. The, the issue with it is that the, the standards have changed three times in the last year. So, every time we've gotten it close, the, the feds change it. So, in Atwood, it's the only contract in the state that does guard rail, is on, they're, they're not willing to put anything out that doesn't meet federal, federal standards, because they don't wanna be sued.
Which is more expensive.
More expensive.
More work.
And harder to get.
Yep.
So, we're ready to go, but it may be, it could be, just getting guard rail, we're doing a project in Richmond right now, it took six months just to get guard rail in sections from the manufacturer. So, it could be, you know, even if you bid it now, it could be months and months just waiting for materials to get here.
Given that uncertainty, and we just don't want an unprotected abutment.
No, I was just asking, where are we waiting on about bidding?
I, I got you.
Yep. So, what, what, what do you need the motion to be, Slade?
It would be to declare an emergency at that stage, so we can get somebody out there. We don't need to go through a quote process or anything else.
All right, that's, that's my motion, to declare an emergency and be with the act.
Yes, sir.
All right, motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad, any discussion? All favors, ah, or opposed, okay?
We'll ask Mike to get with Ms. Bridget and make sure that it's clear in the minutes, uh, what the language needs to be, so it, uh, helps her.
In my motion, though, it did include Tim's pay to Chris.
I like that.
Put that in there.
Gentlemen, I, uh, item B would be consideration of potential action regarding invitation for Rankin County to become a member of an or, national organization that's called Transportation for America. Uh, the total annual membership cost is one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. That's a year's dues to be a member of the organization. I, I went ahead and put in the, in the, uh, entry here, the purpose of it, which is to afford Rankin County access to this organization's information and expertise at the national level in furtherance of our effort to position our, specifically, our transportation initiatives for federal assistance. Your membership in this organization can be canceled at any time. We believe that, and when I say we, uh, the, these are the folks that you've given the responsibility to, uh, to push and to, uh, publicize the county's efforts at the federal level with respect to significant transportation initiatives that y'all have already identified. The primary initiative that we're working on, it is not the only initiative, but it's the primary focus at present, is what we refer to as the grade separation project. This is an extension of the East Metro Access Parkway that currently runs from Lakeland Drive. At present, it is about to be in place all the way to Cross Gates Boulevard. Eventually, Cross Gates Boulevard will be upgraded and enhanced to Highway eighty. The extension of that project then proceeds across Highway eighty to the south and approaches the Interstate Interchange there. That's a significant improvement project that's coming, that is planned, that is currently on what we call the STIP, which is, uh, under MPO's construct, CNPD, is familiar with the project. MDOT is excited about this project. There are a lot of parties coming alongside to try to promote and push this project. The one hitch in this project, the one impediment in this project, and nobody will be surprised to hear, is the grade separation. That's a fancy engineer way to talk about a bridge over a railroad. That is a significant project. KCS Railway, uh, runs through that area. At present, because it's a grade crossing, that, uh, KCS is restricted in its speed of travel there. And that impacts the movement primarily of freight through, uh, the Meridian to Dallas corridor. So, it has the attention at the federal level of what can we do to bring about improvements? I'm giving you a lot of information to help, I'm really covering two things at once, is what I'm doing. You allowed, thankfully, uh, with our thanks, we thank you for this. You allowed Brad, myself, uh, Trey Jones with Brunini, Joe Wagner, uh, and Ryan Hernd, Herndon to go to Washington DC recently, and to meet with our elected delegation and their staffs to address this particular project, but we also covered other projects, and I'll talk about that at some point later. This piece right here, we believe is an important piece to the puzzle. Transportation for America is very well-connected in Washington DC, is looked to primarily for their expertise in rail transportation initiatives. And so, we would like to use their services to be a part of what they're doing in DC to heighten awareness about our project and to help us figure out ways to make this project as important to Washington as it is to us.
Okay, I make a motion that we join, uh, this membership, America, whatever, Transportation for America.
Can, can we also authorize issuance of check, which I always forget to put in my doggone?
Yes.
So, is this a one-time thing?
Once a year.
Once, once a year.
Twelve hundred dollars.
But you can opt out anytime.
Yeah, twelve hundred dollars. All right, motion by Steve to adopt this.
We need to be a member after, if we are successful, we will find out. Of course, we may have, if we're, if we're good at it, Jay, we may have enough money to let y'all keep paying.
Well, you said, uh, well, it was one obstacle, I, I think it's really two. The city of Brandon has yet to come on board and saying, they're gonna partner with us on this, so.
I, I think they have, uh, because they deferred to us when we submitted our appropriations and authorization requests and included this grade separation as a part of that, Jay. It was with the understanding that the city of Brandon was going to be alongside Rankin County.
And if they're not?
You guys have the authority at any point in time to say, until we get confirmation that you are alongside, that you're in, we're not proceeding. At this point, you've only made requests, we, we don't have an authorization for that specific part of the project yet. We've got a lot of study. I'll have more to say here momentarily about that.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Steve, second by Brad, any more discussion? Not all favors, ah, or opposed?
Okay, and, and that will include authorization to issue check. Thank you.
Good.
I don't wanna get notified that I was deficient on that. Item C, that was not directed to anybody in particular, by the way, it was just directed generally. Uh, item C is authority to advertise notice to bidders. This is on our depart, State Department of Health WIC renovation project that's at the facility in Pearl. This project's being funded by the State Department of Health through a federal grant program. Because we own the property, they have to work through us to actually get the renovation project going. We took care of the county by in, uh, by demanding that there be a reimbursement arrangement for all time or expenses associated with our work to help move this project. And so, we have an actual agreement in place with State Department of Health to reimburse us for our administrative time, okay? So, all we're doing is allowing, basically, we're allowing our services, what we normally do on a reno project, we're allowing that to filter through us for them on their behalf, and they pay us for our time to boot with it.
Motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Daniel, any discussion? All favors, ah, or opposed?
I've got a couple of items of additional business, Mr. President, but I'll wait my turn.
Go ahead and do it, now.
I, I know that we got.
I got, I got one, too.
We got one mattering executive that I'm.
Okay, all right, Keith, you wanna go ahead?
Uh, yes, sir. Is there any discussion on the, uh, agenda for Tuesday's meeting?
Can't look at it.
No, I looked at it.
Hey, I wanna say one thing on Tuesday's meeting, I won't be here on Tuesday, which everybody says is great, it's outstanding.
I may not.
Family vacation to the beach on next week, so, but, only thing, I see on here that pins to District Two is that, uh, AT&T utility permit, Harrison, so I'm good with that if it comes up, but that's the only thing I see on here, so.
All right, go ahead, Keith, anything, nothing else? All right, additional business, we got one here.
We have one of them.
Start with this, and then you're gonna, then Craig, I got one thing I wanna add to ask, which you, you need to be a part of that, but, uh, go ahead.
The, uh, the discussion, I paid this one put on there, cause, I mean, we are way over than what we were last year.
On what?
On the dumpster.
Oh.
That's what this is.
Okay, okay.
And, uh, I don't, I mean, I don't know what y'all thoughts are, but, I mean.
Wow, it, what I looked at here.
We, we, we either need to get us a rubbish pit somewhere, or, or start charging or something, cause.
Well, part of it is.
We already have garbage pickup, why do they have to go to a dumpster?
Well, they don't go with this garbage, Steve, and they won't pick up, uh, different things, some of the things they put in there.
What are they putting in there?
Anything and everything, and some garbage. But you know, the only thing, it was, this was an odd year with some of the storm stuff and, and the ice stuff, and, and the big thing, I think probably was they were home, they were home for how many, for half a, six months. And Lord, they did some cleanup, so when they do the cleanup, that's where they bring it. So, I think that might balance out, everybody goes back to work now, finally.
I tell you what, man, I, I like the idea of starting to charge people.
How do you do that?
Cause we have to pay for it, we don't have any way of paying for our dumpsters, cause the dumpsters don't come out of our garbage collections, that's all separate.
Right now, we budgeting a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for dumpsters, and we, we.
It may not be a bad idea to do that.
Watch, watch, see where you see those limbs and that stuff they clean up. Your corrode crew's about to be picking them up. I mean, they, they'll do it now, uh, you don't see washing machines and dryers dumped out now because scrap's so high. And they got a place to carry it.
They throw them out at Leesburg.
They throw them all out and.
But, yeah, they, they'll throw old furniture, furniture right on the side of the road.
Yep.
Well, the day, let's think about it, the day that, uh, we got, two times, the guy, the camera guy, him pulled up to the gate on a Sunday, which is closed, dumped it at the gate.
At the gate.
He had, so he was gonna dump it one place or another, if he couldn't get in, at least he dumped it at the gate, I hate that. But he'd gone down some side of the road and dumped that same pile.
I don't know, there's not a good answer.
No, surely not. Rubbish pit, I don't know where we're gonna find one, we've got pushback on that every time we've ever.
I'm not talking about a land, man, I'm talking about a rubbish pit.
Well, there was a guy that wanted, uh, do one on South Pearson, he just didn't present it a very good way.
Yeah.
You know, because, uh, it was viewable from the road, and he very easily could've went in and built a berm, it'd been out of sight, it'd been a great location.
Totally against that.
I'm just saying, it'd been a great location.
And be a good place for it, you're right.
I, I just believe the county needs to step up and buy, I mean.
Heck, Lance is pretty smart, Lance, what do you think?
I think, I think some of the difference is gonna be the fact, the big difference is that we, they were all off, and, and we saw it ourselves. The cleanup, everybody just went crazy with cleaning up and doing things they've been putting off and couldn't do.
Well, I mean, we got contractors bringing two-by-four sheet rock.
Now, I agree, I agree there, now, I don't know how to wean that.
But if, if they not in a.
But you gotta have somebody to charge them.
Yeah, but how do you?
Charge them.
All right, no, this is what happens though, Jay, you got our, our guys there, and you can't distinguish between a contractor or the, or, say, myself or you, that are doing some work on your own house. You drive up there and say, I'm not a contractor, that's all they do, well, here are our guys that are gonna say, prove it, we don't believe.
Say, this material look like it's from a construction site, we're charging this amount of money, that's the end of the day, you know?
You don't have those dumpsters on your.
I don't, but, you know, well, actually, uh, well.
I've, I've got some, we got some, we got some right there.
Take all the dumpsters.
Pearl has them, Pearl charges.
Pull all the dumpsters.
They charge.
I don't think Ritz charges, they got their, in their place, I don't think they charge.
I say, pull all of them.
Well, the problem is for Mike and, and, and on market, the dumpsters there, they, they'll fill them up on Saturday, we can't get them dumping until Tuesday, Wednesday, and we got people throwing, jumping down the road.
Well, that's exactly what I just missed it.
But, I mean.
They're gonna throw it out.
We, we, we got to close the gates until we get new dump.
Well, and we do, we do the same thing at White Road, the exact same thing.
So, we can, I mean, if we're gonna charge everywhere else, I just might, you know, thinking that.
You gonna pay a guy to stand there and charge him when he come in the gate?
Or either only have it open when he, when he get somebody there?
Can we, can we have somebody like on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday, Mike?
Or on just Saturdays, cause that's.
I don't even care about charging them.
Because of the size, okay, you come in with a little pickup, or you come in a big trailer, I mean.
I don't care about charging them, just if you had a man. I don't care about charging them. Just if you had a man there.
We got somebody there on Marquette every day.
Yeah, that's right, Marquette.
If we got somebody at the bigger, where our bigger cost is, on Tu- lock the gates, except Tuesday, Thursday.
Well, that's not changing the fact what's happening though. We're still having, these costs are generated from our dumping them.
I know, but you ain't going to have near the amount of stuff brought in there if you're only open on Tuesday and Thursday. And if it's somebody that's a, looks like it's a commercial business, tell them you got to go to, you know, a landfill.
When they come in. Dump it outside the road, then we're going to go pick it up.
That's right.
I mean, we just going to need to find a way before we can dispose of it.
Yeah, they're going to dump it.
What I, what I, what I run into, Steve, to kind of answer your question is, I mean, we've got the dumpsters open. I mean, I pay a guy to work on Saturdays up here at Marquette, pay a guy, you know, to go to a different location. We do have some that's unmanned.
You don't have a manned one in my district, do you?
No, sir.
There you go. Okay. And I'm not asking to have one.
His open on Sunday, on Saturday.
You got one in your district, it's not manned.
No, but.
I think that maybe one.
On Saturday, on the third Saturday.
I don't think it's closed.
On the third Saturday, they opened one at Florence, but they got a man there.
Yeah, but I got a man, I got a man there. Before I run into, just like the other day, I was down there at Marquette. Guy pulls up in a plumbing truck. I mean, I can clearly see that he's a plumber. I said, sir, we, and I just happened to be there, we was doing swapping out and trying to get it organized down there. And I said, sir, we don't take commercial trash down here. He said, well, it's coming from my house.
Right.
I can't, I don't know that it didn't come from his house.
That's exactly what I was saying, yeah.
So if we put a fee on them, they're going to take care of it? It don't matter if it's coming from their house or not, we charge them.
I know if I go to, I know if I leave my house and I go to the city of Jackson, it depends on what size unit I take over there to buy them over there to their landfill, they're going to charge me to dump in there. I just take a pickup load of so much, a trailer so much.
Well, if we had a landfill, but we don't have that.
Yeah, we do.
Where?
Out there where I live.
No, that's private. He talking about.
Oh, we don't.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they bring it out. Yeah, I know tons that bring it out.
Now, I have, to kind of, to kind of square it up, I mean, I have done some checking on dumpsters, camp, owning our own cans, owning our own truck and doing this. And I've also talked to the landfill out there, what they'll charge us to do it. And he's going to cut us a pretty good rate on it. But it's still, it's still stuff coming in and I don't know how.
So, Mike, out of this number that Keith gave us here?
Yes, sir.
Oh, how much of this is for dumpsters and how much is it for disposal?
This is just dumpsters here.
Oh, this is not even disposal included?
Dumpsters and, I guess, disposal, the ton.
That's your rental on your dumpsters and when they go dump.
Well, can we get a break now, what the cost of the dumpsters are?
About three hundred bucks every time you go dump them?
No, I'm just talking about.
Rental, the rental on the dumpsters.
Oh, it's a, it's a flat fee. Yeah, it depends on whether it's a thirty or forty, Jay, but.
Oh, why don't we?
You talking about the idea of five hundred dollars a month to rent one of those dumpsters.
I mean.
I think a thirty's one, a hundred, a hundred and twenty, and a forty's ten or twenty dollars more a month.
I thought it was more.
Fee you pay.
Most of the cost is, every time they come and pick it up, there's a charge for picking it up and transferring it. And then there's a charge for actually disposing, the amount of disposal.
So you're getting charged about three times, rental on the dumpster, rental to pick it up, and rental for the stump.
Well, why don't y'all break that down for us?
Okay.
Why?
So we know if we want it to be worth our while to go buy our own or start dumping our own?
Yeah, you don't buy your own trucks?
One. No, no, we not talking about dump trucks. We talking about a truck that can go empty a dumpster.
You seen what they pick them up with? That's a special truck.
One. We wouldn't need more than one.
How much does a truck cost now?
Truck's around one seventy. You can do them back on a buyback and they'll bring some worse in the one fifty range in three years. I think is that right, one thirty?
I think this all balance out. We'd look at it for a year or something.
Costs you about ten thousand dollars a year for the truck.
I'm not, I'm not on board for.
You don't like the idea of charging a fee to recoup our costs?
Reason I say that, Jay, I think they, if they know they're going to pay, they just shouldn't go dump it on the side of the road somewhere. Just because, because if you go to up there with Steve, is one thing about him, I say that, Fauxche, he charged at one fee. It don't matter if you got a pickup or you got a big old dump trailer.
We not, we not talking about charging somebody for recycling. We talking about pickup trucks coming in there with a load of mattresses or two bags.
Same thing Fauxche is. He's not recycling.
The thing, the thing about, the thing about the charge that makes it easy for us.
It's fair.
We don't have to sort through, whether it's construction or house or whatever. It's just a flat fee. We don't turn nobody away.
Can we take this and digest it and maybe let?
Yeah.
Jay get some numbers and in a week or month, bring it back.
The thing is, we budgeted a hundred and thirty and we going to be over two hundred.
Well, we need to put some thought in what we do.
Yeah, that's right.
I agree with that. I think the time on that's the budget coming up.
Yeah, we just got to get, yeah.
Now's the time to do it.
And maybe Keith can help us, Mike, put some thought in how, best way we can handle this and with the public and the garbage, okay?
Yeah, because I mean, I don't think we have a contract on the cans, right?
I don't.
We're not under a contract.
On the dumps, we do.
We are.
Okay.
They provide them to us with a, with a rate.
Could that be in the RFP that goes out?
Is that, is that figured in? Is there, when they bid the garbage pickup overall? Or is it something separate?
We could still outsource, like, you remember a few years ago, somebody got in, you knew, we got, we got some go down somewhere.
Oh, shoot, sorry.
I mean, I think we can come up with a plan, present to y'all.
Oh, look at it.
And see by time, break the time.
Okay, yeah.
I just want to clear that.
I know y'all have some other additional business.
Yeah, that might.
Can I, can I do one additional thing and get a feel for some, something?
Oh, God, how much debate is this going to cost?
Go ahead.
This is only three, this is only three minutes.
Spit it out.
Okay.
Yeah, I've, here lately, I've got several.
He's going to tend to that lecture.
Several calls about low hanging limbs.
Yeah.
Getting campers and stuff like that. We didn't, we hardly don't have the capability to reach up there and do it safely.
Right.
I've been looking around. I did put in my budget. It's a very expensive thing in my budget, but I got to looking around the other day and I found a used machine, used draft.
Draft.
Uh-huh, thirty thousand, a little over thirty thousand dollars. I would like to look at it. I think I can swing it in my budget. I have to move some money around, but I think I can swing it. But if it is something that I feel like I'll do, starting machine, we're going to run every day. That's why.
It's a smaller giraffe, not.
Well, they just make one, they make two sizes. They make the seventy foot Jared and they make a remote control that'll go to fifty-five foot. But what I was looking at was something that was inexpensive to get us started where we could trim some of these limbs safely.
Right.
If I'd have to get up in the back of a dump truck and stand on the head, right?
Oh, I agree.
And I wanted to be able to look at the machine while we had the board meeting here.
I don't have limbs in my district.
I know.
The problem, the problem is, the problem is, the legal height, legal height is thirteen.
Really?
Legal height is thirteen six.
I got them.
And a lot, so if we, if you got a limb lower than that, technically, we could be liable for it.
Oh, I had one of your constituents corner me about it.
Yeah.
I think it'd make our road look super.
And, and if you get up, you need to be at least cut them at least fourteen feet.
And I'm not talking about skying out of roads. I'm talking about just trying to lift them up, get them.
Right.
Get, get limbs to where when they break out at night over a storm or a ice storm, that they at least hang.
Jay, you don't have the little twenty foot roads like we have.
But I just want to be able to go look at the machine, if the machine is what we think, that we can go ahead and proceed on.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good with that because, yeah, we got, we got a complete canopy on the road.
Hey, do we need to add that to the agenda or just what?
I'll get, there's a dead tree.
Alright, motion.
Just before you get to Taylor Walk, that big round, dead and it's right on the road. It's going to fall.
Well, now, this is not going to open the door for us cutting these trees that the power line's too close to.
No, sir.
Because that's.
We're not going to get involved, involved with those because, because that is with the right of way.
Okay, alright, Daniel made a motion to add us to the agenda.
Second.
Second by myself.
I think Craig had one.
Okay, alright, motion to add us to the agenda, second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
So, motion approved.
Motion approved by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? Craig, you want?
Yeah, is it a political subdivision that has it now? Is it a county, city?
It's, it's a equipment company that does have it. I have to get two quotes on it, Craig, and I feel like that I can do that through the two companies. This, one company's got it on another company's website, so I think we can make a pair of the quotes.
What's your, this is going to be a two quote or an intergovernmental transfer situation?
Okay. It'd be two quotes, but I want to go look at the machine. It's in, it's in Tallahatchie County. And that's what I was trying to do was be able to go look at the machine, make sure it is something that's not worse.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, okay.
Thank you.
Craig, you got something, and I'm going to say this, I don't know if you's a part of anything you have, because I'm going to bring it up and it may be something. I want to know what we've got to do to get, I thought we were authorized to advertise Gunner Road a month, three, a month ago, we were going to advertise. Well, now I find out we're still waiting on the water. A reason for advertising is to send a message to all these utility people because they're not going to do anything as long as, well, they ain't doing nothing, they ain't doing nothing. To come on and get your power lines up and get the things up. But now I find out we're waiting because of water company. So I want to know what we got to do. I thought when we approved to advertise it, we were going to advertise it.
Yeah, so I'm assuming, and Chris, you, I may have you at a disadvantage, that's your project, but without knowing what would be a part of the relocation activity of the utilities, it.
You talking water, the water line?
Primarily the water line, but there's another utility that has surface as well, Gulf South Pipeline is in Biggs now. And so there's an issue with, with that particular area, although that's a very small and narrow area that we're looking at. But my assumption would be that until we know what's going to happen with the water utility relocation.
Well, they, they think, they think that this cares money, which we've thrown it out the door, but that's what they're walking on.
So I think we're close. The board is of a mind. We don't really care about a potential conflict with Southern Rankin.
My point is, as long as we're not doing anything, why are they worried about it? And the same way, your poles are lined up out there, they're going to put them up in winter. It's going to be a winter project. Well, we way past winter and they're still sitting there. But I mean, because they're thinking, well, we're not, we're not doing anything. They're not advertising. Why's that, what's our rush? It's what appears to me.
Is that Entergy or is that Southern Pines? Okay.
Both of them.
Well, I, Jared, I did talk to Southern Pines. They did contact me this week on Southern Pines. I mean, they've been fighting these storms.
Yeah.
They did say they were getting on that, having a little trouble with some water line issues. Nothing major, but they're just trying to get Monterey out there to locate the water line so they can set some hose. But he felt like in the next forty-five days.
Alright, that's my whole point. If they know you're advertising and they know it's coming, they'll get it there. If not, I mean, that's just human nature. I'd be the same way. Well, in a rush, they ain't got concrete poured. I'm not going to worry about getting out there, gearing up to get on that site.
Did talk to Lance on the other day, he said they're working on and, I hope in the next thirty, forty-five days.
And an energy excuse, I don't know, because their, their whole thing was, we're going to make this a winter project. We can work it off the road. Still does.
Is it the water?
Be a winter project.
Water association.
Be a winter project for you. He going to be in the winter for it to get going.
Do what?
The, the uncertainty about what, if anything, we're going to have to pay to Southern Rankin to move their utility.
Who's their engineer?
Same one, same one. He's every one of them just yet.
In Rankin County.
We need to come up with a formula for them. And then I right away, a permit and a fee every time they book to a line in our right of way.
That is in process.
And we'll call it the Hugh formula.
It's, it's going to be applicable to all water associations across the county.
I only want to mess with, I mean, I only want that for water associations.
And you know, the only one, only one hand contacted me is Southwest Rankin. They're the only ones that have not reached it. And I know he's got a, huh? He's not their engineer. Every other one's contacted. And they say, he said.
Yep.
I give them to.
Yeah.
Jared. If you could say something to clear this up, he is also telling them that we are controlling the cares money.
Yeah.
For water associations and they need to contact, that I'm the one that, and we don't have it. We don't have the authority.
That's what they keep saying now.
Yes, sir.
That's what they're riding on is, we got, y'all got this money and you can help us and we'll get this water line moved for you, help me and you. And I said, we can't use it that way.
We don't have it. It's at the state.
That's correct. It's actually at the Mississippi Rural Water Association, which is their industry oversight and direction, right? And so we have encouraged any inquiries that have come our way from other water associations, if they've reached out to us and we have had two or three that actually have contacted either me or our staff. We've communicated to them, you need to talk to Mississippi Rural Water Association because that is the, that, that is the vehicle through which you can access states' rescue plan funds and.
I'm going to give you a number. I want you to call this individual and explain it to him.
Okay.
Because he's going to have a wealth of knowledge.
Mississippi Rural Water Association has already been.
Take note.
They've been contacted.
We're going to be done in a minute.
Yeah. So here's the, back to your point, the answer to the question is this. If we go forward and advertise a project and we, we put our bid specs out and we receive bid responses and position ourselves to accept a bid on the construction activity without an understanding, a clear understanding about what's going to happen with the utility, I'll just say the utilities, plural. Without a clear understanding, before we do that, we are guaranteeing ourselves at least one change order, if not multiple change orders, that are related to, you didn't tell me, contractor, you didn't tell me that I was going to have to wait forty-five days for the utilities to be out of the way. You didn't, you didn't tell me that I was going to have to accommodate this utility infrastructure that's in conflict by moving it myself or by allowing a third party to come in and move it on my project, by the way.
I understand that. I know, I know that, but this is ridiculous. We should have bid this at the beginning of the year and we're sitting here running, we'll be at the end of the year and we're still talking about it. So what we need to do to clear it up.
Get the utilities jacked up.
Just clear it up. That's, that's all I'm saying. I'm sick of telling people the same old excuse because it makes us as a board and elected officials look like we're just talking out of every side of our mouth.
We've got to have a meeting of the minds with all of the utilities.
Well, then, that's the thing. What have we got to do to get that?
We need the decision makers for the utility at the table, telling us.
Is that the engineer?
But on that, if they don't think we're fixing to start, why do we want to hurry up and get out there?
We actually told them in December of nineteen.
I know.
That we're fixing to start and we told them to start your relocation activity, right? That was a year and a half.
You put it in bold print.
And we agreed to pay them, hadn't we agreed?
The whole project.
We never talked about who was going to pay for what. We, at that point in time, we knew that there were conflicts, Brad. We assumed that the vast majority of the conflicts, and this is, this is accurate, by the way, for the Gunner Road project. We assumed that the majority of the conflicts would be a situation where their infrastructure was in our existing county right of way. Where the infrastructure in conflict is in existing county right of way, they have to relocate at their cost. There are pieces of the system, however, that are located on private easement. Not existing county right of way and not new acquired county right of way. It's private easement. The law requires the county to reimburse for their cost of relocation of that piece or those pieces. They have taken the position, we don't want to piecemeal change our system. We want a, essentially, a new. They have taken the position, we don't want to piecemeal change our system. We want a, essentially, a new system.
They said they knew that they needed to upgrade that, and they were gonna use this to upgrade their line.
Yep.
I know that exactly, like exactly what quote words, way back, a year ago. Leave alone, we're gonna get it done.
I say pay them and put a fee on the permit. They'll pay it back, it may take ten years to recoup it, but the people that live in Pearl, or Brandon, or Piscatawag, don't need to be paying for a water association in Gunner Road, just like they don't need to pay up here. Those people are the ones that benefit a new water line.
But you know what, what's bad, and you, you agree, that you got two, you got a lot of these water companies that'll usually work with us very well.
They all do.
These two here are gonna make, all those have to pay the price.
It's one engineer-
Right.
That's doing it.
Right.
And he thinks it's being cute.
They won't fart, get together, run that one off and get them one, I tell you.
Yeah.
They can go to rural development and probably get a grant to pay for it, or either a very low interest loan. But he just, I mean, this is just standing hard and trying to be, I'm the big guy.
And it makes the board, make us look like the bad people.
Yep.
Every one of them call, y'all got that money, y'all got-
We don't.
And we say no, and I explain all that, and you know, they're, he's saying, oh, they got it, they got it, they just holding on to it, you know? Uh, so, but, okay, all that, we know all that. What do we need to do, and how quick can we get it done? Because this is, we're going through some fine construction weather.
That's true.
And we, and the mo- we, we looked at this, uh, uh, it was over a month ago. I even told some people, we authorized the bidding of it. And we'd know something, probably in sixty to ninety days. Well, we hadn't even bid it. We just authorized it.
Can't, I mean, the, I think, 'cause I just went through this, and we had to wait, if we jump in there and we bid it, and we got a contract, and we've got to have a certain date that that got, and then if the water hadn't moved their lines, you have a conflict.
Yeah.
So, how can we put pressure on the water association to move their lines?
You can't.
You can't.
You can't.
It's, it's exceedingly difficult.
They're gonna sit right there and say-
Let's bid it out, tell the contractor, build the road if it's on top of the damn water line, and then they have work, and let them worry about moving it.
And then they'll have to pay for us to, pay us to dig it up.
They, they, they might.
No, I'm just, I don't know what the answer is with that.
The answer is, you gonna have to deal with the water association, just come to terms with them so we can get moving, just like Steve did up there.
What have I been saying right here, Jake?
I'm just, we, we-
We, we've been dealing with them, deal with them, let's deal with them. Let's get these uti- and power company same way, both of them.
We, we will, we will schedule a meeting.
Power company, they can be in there now, two, two weeks.
But they're not, it could have been, right?
Yep.
We'll, we'll schedule a meeting.
They're not pushed.
Because there's nothing happening then.
We'll schedule a meeting with, uh, with the president of Southern Rankin, and, uh, we'll clarify what's going on with Gulf South Pipeline and try to get their people involved. I've got some ideas on that, uh, that, that are in play. I'm not sure where that's going, but that's a fairly big number, uh, that has been put to us.
Yep.
Uh, so this may be as good a time as any to, to update you on that particular piece of it. As I mentioned, there's, there is a thirty-inch pipeline that's been resident under Gunner Road now for probably fifty years.
Right.
And so, the forebearer of Gulf, Gulf South Pipeline had that installed. It's at a significant depth.
Is it still live?
Yes. It is, it is a primary trunk line that serves gas, pipeline, infrastructure, interstate.
How much is due normally?
Well, just, what I'm saying.
Currently, there is an estimate, and, and by the way, let me, let me set this up so you understand why we were contacted. Number one, it's not in conflict with any actual road construction.
Right.
Uh, there's nothing about what we are doing project-wise that impacts that pipeline. It's at a sufficient buried depth to where it is out of conflict. So, you might be asking, well, why in the world they even contacted us? It's because when we are expanding our right-of-way footprint, Gulf South Pipeline has an internal policy, not a rule, not a law, nothing mandated by the feds. They have an internal policy that says, anything in the public road right-of-way that overtops our buried pipeline infrastructure will be hard armored. The current right-of-way width is fifty feet, let's just say. And so, this pipeline, presumptively, is hard armored to cover that expanse of easement. When we expanded our right-of-way footprint to include an additional ten to fifteen feet on either side of the existing right-of-way, which is what we always do in all cases for, I mean, that's the structure that we use, so that we have plenty of room to do all of our road maintenance. When we expanded that, we pushed the, the actual recognized right-of-way beyond the boundary of their hard armory. And so, their internal policy says, we have to expand our hard armory to match the new right-of-way footprint. And county, it's your project, you expanded the right-of-way, you need to pay us to do that. So, I have-
Can we unexpand it right there, right there?
Exactly, right.
Just suck it in?
We, we've talked and kicked that around. There's some issues there. Keep in mind that we didn't get an easement, we didn't get a right-of-way from Gulf South Pipeline. We got it from the landowners. So, it's, it's a very tricky procedure for us to go back through our right-of-way acquisition guys, and essentially deactivate and try to get them to pay us back for a right-of-way that we bought.
Don't pay them back. Why they pay us back?
We don't have to, don't worry about that.
No.
The, the issue then becomes, you have just donated money to private citizens.
No, we're still own it. We're gonna still own it.
Now, if we own it at all, if we own it at all, but keep in mind, what we own is a right-of-way, that's short of fee, okay? If, if there's any transactional issue that's in, in the record, Gulf South's gonna still take the same position. They're gonna say, ah, y'all are just renaming something, you hadn't really changed the dynamics, okay? But we've, we've kicked that around, it was the very first thought I had, by the way, was, well, we'll just take, we'll just give back the right-of-way at that section and call it good. So, where we stand at the moment is that they have made a demand that we enter into an agreement that allows them to design and then implement their hard armory at that location, hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
And all they're gonna do is dig down, and they're gonna do a split casing.
Casing.
They're gonna cut it in half, I weld them in, put it back together, weld it in, it's split casing. How deep is the line?
I think it's six feet at that location.
I mean, really? You don't even have to have a trench box for that hardly. Yeah.
Hundred and thirty-one, that's an estimate. Of course, the agreement would say, we think that's what it's gonna take to get it done. If it's more, you have to pay us more. If it's less, we'll give you your money back. If they want a hundred and thirty-one, uh, and so, uh, I, I'm not prepared, we have an executive session, I'm prepared to tell you more.
Okay.
Uh, because I think that there is, uh, upcoming potential litigation about that issue that I'll address with you in executive. I don't wanna get into that right now.
Well, biggest thing is that water company moved it.
We will, we will schedule the meeting that we need to have with Southern Rankin, Jared.
Sounds like Gunner Road ain't going over fast, though.
We, we will schedule that meeting as soon as we can make it happen, okay? Are we ready to move on to some other?
Yeah, whatever else you got.
Easy, dude, she got her flags over here.
Discussion, you got, Chris, I guess you got your, you got your marching orders. Do that and get Bud off our back, too.
Awesome.
I get it. This won't work.
Do that and get Bud off our back, too.
Yeah. Alright. Uh, gentlemen, we, uh, we were notified today that, um, that we have- A fellow who has opened up a road fireworks stand up at four seventy-one, building square. A gentleman's name is Jonathan Pond. Uh, there's no record that there's been an application of any kind. Okay.
There's what?
We approved that as a conditional use permit on his own, remember, he couldn't get in town to do new.
That's correct.
Okay, but as far as him setting up and operate, I mean, operating without inspection from the government.
Yeah, that's, that's what's not happening. It's the, the, really, it's not about the zoning deal, it's about the, the lack of an inspection and the required permitting through the state side and the county side, uh, on the actual operation itself. So, it's not a zoning issue, it's an inspection, it's a failure of inspection issue, okay? So, we, we want some direction from you guys, given the situation that we're in, the timeframe that we're in now.
Yeah, there's no way to get there between now and then. He's about to be missed out on the weekend.
I guess that's my question, how long would the inspection process take?
Well, they're ready and they fill out the application, and all I think Brett could do it.
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as he does your, your paperwork and he's-
So, so-
Brett's asking, he's got customers. Brett's asking, do we shut him down and make him come get this paperwork straight, or what?
I, I would, he, he would be my suggestion on it, is send Brett out there and tell him he's got till close of business on tomorrow, which is Friday, to have all the paperwork in, or it won't be open over the weekend, which is his prime time sell thing. That way, that gives him, where, twenty, thirty-six hours? All you gotta do, I mean, if the process can, if we can get it done by then, if he comes in to do his stuff.
Brett's pulling it now, he's fixing to walk through there, we may be able to tell you if this guy's got a CLIs or whatever.
I mean, I mean, if he-
He's still gotta be right with the state, though.
That's right, I mean, he's got till Friday at five, and that gives him thirty-six hours, not, maybe I'm a holiday, whatever long that time is, to get it done.
No pressure, no pressure.
I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna run it.
I know, I'm just laughing. He gives him thirty-six hours, gets his, he's going, going, taking off already.
You better sell the heck out of it between now and then.
I don't even care if he gets open now.
Yeah.
There's enough paperwork done there.
Okay, gentlemen, I think that's good, uh, enough on that.
That'd be my suggestion, just-
So, there's no board action we have to take after they do all that stuff? That's just, okay.
We're just making sure y'all are aware, y'all are likely to get phone calls, so.
The bottom outcome is, is, just make sure I'm clear with that.
Well, if Brett can sign off on all of it.
If he can get it all done by five o'clock tomorrow, when, at close of business, then let him run it to the weekend. If he doesn't, he shuts it down.
Y'all slipped up on y'all's farm. Are y'all good? Are you out there doing inspection right now?
Well, and, and tell him what he needs to do, I mean, say, hey, this is what's gotta happen, and tell him what the parameters are. I mean, you've got to get compliant by Friday. Look at that.
There he is.
For a meter, you say, Miss Renee? Okay.
Yeah, the power's on, stand is up, complete, they've been selling fireworks.
No, we actually checked the power company, like, so they didn't have a meter, but they-
There, there's a power meter there, there, there's electricity, there's lights on, there's fans on, I'm a ninja. No, there, there's, I mean, it's, it's electricity, I, I went and parked it, yeah.
What'd the guy tell you, Brett? Did you talk to him?
Yes, I did. Um, when, when I got there, uh, I got a phone call this morning about the stand, I don't know anything about it, I, I did not know.
Was it by a competitor, I'm guessing?
It is by a competitor. I, I didn't realize there was that much competitive firework.
What are you talking about, man? It's like the mafia.
So, I got to look at it. It's, um, right there where the old city station house is, Dr. Offord, they want to go there and build a road, it's right there, and there's a ten of-
What side of four seventy, if you're going north?
He's gonna throw it on my side.
It's on the right-hand side.
Oh, well, where that's my side.
Oh, it's not on city side.
It's not on my side?
No, it's not on your road.
Oh, well then, take, take back what I said. Take back what I said. The game's figured out.
So, anyway, uh, I'm-
Yeah, it's like Brad did, that's, that's district, that is great.
We need to make that clear upfront.
I said, you know, have you aware that you're supposed to have a permit to open, to have all this done before? He says, I was not aware of that. So, I asked him, I says, well, have you, so I kinda backed up, I said, well, have you even gone to the building department? That's when I fixed my question, I said, yes, that y'all did a conditional use on it, and it hadn't all been approved yet with the power and all that. So, I told him, I says, well, you need to go by the tax collector's office, and number one, get that paperwork done, and then I need to come out and inspect it. So, as of about ten minutes ago on the phone before I got here, his wife is leaving for Louisiana, she ain't even done any of that stuff yet.
Done what stuff?
All the permits, so.
Finished the permits.
Oh, well, heck, if he ain't done none, I think he shuts down till he gets right.
I mean, I, I just closed it at this point. I mean, I don't know, it's, it's your stuff.
He ain't got a choice.
He, he ain't done nothing.
And we can't let him operate, if he's not, and let these others operate.
What are you supposed to, I mean, what, what are you supposed to do?
By the statute, if I go in and he, number one, if he's selling before he's inspected, at that point in time, we're supposed to shut him down.
But what, I'm talking about, what are you supposed to inspect right now?
Yeah.
Uh, make sure the electricity is on.
Alright, you saw that.
Electricity's there, um-
And it's not supposed to be, right?
And it's not supposed to be, that's, that's one thing. Uh, number two, fire extinguishers.
Yeah.
Uh, his Rankin County tax ID paperwork.
How does he get that?
He has not.
I know, but how, that's-
Oh, tax collector.
Okay.
Uh, uh, gotta inspect his insurance.
Okay.
Which he did send me a copy of his insurance.
Okay.
Uh, so he does have insurance, just he don't, he don't have any of the other stuff to get to, to our offices to inspect and file it.
Can, can you go out there and do what your job, and when you get to, he don't have the right paperwork for the tax collector? Negative. He don't have this, negative. He has this, he has this, he don't have this, and then give him that and file it. You've done your job, and tell him, when you get this stuff complete-
Call me.
Call me, and don't sell anything till you do. Can you, I mean-
Yes, I mean, it, it does-
I'd rather, I do, I do. I mean, that way, we and he has a record that we did everything we could to help him, and I don't even know him.
How'd they get power out there?
Electricity. Coming down the road.
Is it energy or Southern Rankin?
Central, central electric.
We've been in here too long, Brett.
Central electric. It, uh-
You know, he did a permit, I didn't get a permit, though.
Man.
Well, he didn't give them.
Hey.
Didn't get a permit.
We don't, we don't even go there. Central electric. Yeah. We just leave that alone.
It'd been better if he got on the other side of the street, he had till Friday at five, but the gang's setting him down, so.
That's where he parked them, so. So, Renee, what does he need to get the permit? What was he supposed to do?
You gotta inspect it.
And do that, okay. And then we'll sign off on it.
Well, just-
Right.
Have your list. Don't have this, don't have this. And say, look, buddy, when you get it, call me. It may be Christmas, though, before you sell fireworks.
Okay, alright. Right, alright. So, he still needs the tax collector stuff.
Well, when I talked to him on the phone, his wife is coming, she's going to y'all's office to finish up all that stuff, and then she's going to the tax collectors and-
But she's in Louisiana.
She's in Louisiana.
Well, she might make it.
Hey, he's gonna come up here and do it. Yeah, he gonna have plenty of time, sounds like, yeah.
Well, that's, just do what you do.
I mean, if you're going in the fireworks business, I would think you're supposed to know what you need to do to go in business.
And he thinks all I gotta do is have some fireworks. He knows that much.
I was fixing to say.
Oh, really?
I've seen the sign, I've seen that sign, hell, I've, I've had a sign up for a week or two.
I have.
I didn't realize.
How long, have they been selling fireworks, huh?
Yeah, they've been selling all week.
Yeah. I'd let you go do your job.
Oh, God. Wouldn't you know?
There you go, Steve. He's probably right there by that, that guy with the stories.
Yeah.
Alright, hey, yeah. The next item under additional business is, um, and, and that's another utility relocation issue, different project. This is on the Amanda Drive project in Pearl. Uh, Entergy, it's a replacement of the box culvert, or maybe it's a location of a box culvert. Entergy, uh, has requested relocation funds, reimbursement amount from the county related to this project, because the infrastructure that needs to be relocated at the box culvert location is on private easement that is controlled by Entergy. And so, they've requested, uh, a reimbursement of forty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty cents. That's a preliminary relocation reimbursement estimate. Uh, the finalized cost is yet to be determined. The, the reason that we're asking that this action be taken under additional businesses is because we are in a pretty serious time crunch here. They are trying to get this project completed during the summer, before we have school bus traffic to have to deal with, starting in August. So, Entergy needs an answer as soon as possible on a utility relocation agreement, and that estimated cost being authorized to reimburse for this project.
And this is coming out of our funds.
Out of what fund?
Our feds.
Out of what?
Out of the CARES.
CARES.
How's that, or how'd that work?
Well, I'm assuming, now, let me say, I'm assuming it's gonna come out of, we're, this is part of the, a package, I'm sure we're gonna be presenting whenever we go and bundle them all together, that, I'm, I'm thinking that-
We'll have more to say about that. It's, there, there is a strong possibility that we will be able to utilize some of- that we will be able to utilize some of our additional non-budgeted funding to cover this cost.
Y'all catching what Craig keeps saying, there's a possibility, I mean, he don't wanna be concrete on none of this stuff.
But I don't think he got any way to be concrete.
If, if they would put me in charge of it, then I could be real concrete, but they haven't given.
So anyway, Mike and I met out there with all the utility folks, uh, two, two, two weeks ago. And, uh, this'll happen, I met Energy last week on my adjacent property, cause they were giving me quote on putting it in, when they said, oh, why, by the way, we paid for that right away, we gotta move, and there's gonna, we need to be reimbursed for our cost. And so I told Craig, man, twenty-five thousand, it can't be more than, it's just a cover, you know, well, it's forty-two. And, and they said it's cause it's on each side of the road, they have to move it, so, but, in order to get the thing done this month in July, we're kinda, we gotta act on it.
Sounds kinda like my Dr. Road deal.
Yeah, but they'll get it done next week. I mean, we ain't got a choice, so.
We, we need to add that, and we need to, uh, to authorize the execution of the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
And ultimately, the reimbursement of the required amount, and I would suggest to you that, that maybe you just set it not to exceed number. This is an estimate, um, so my, my suggestion, not exceed fifty.
No, I say, we, we're not going to exceed forty-two. Yeah. Yeah. They can stick to that, if they can eat the rest.
They said that, they put that number out, didn't they?
Right.
I'd say forty-two.
Alright, I'll make the motion to add that to the agenda.
Alright, motion to add this to the agenda by Jay.
Second.
Second by Daniel, any discussion? All firsts, ah.
Ah.
All opposed?
Alright.
Motion approved.
So move.
Alright.
Yep.
Motion approved by Jay, seconded by Daniel, all opposed, ah, all opposed, okay.
That also includes authority to issue check, um, and, and we will, uh, work with Jessica to make sure we get that figured out correctly. Next item, just a quick report for you guys about our trip to DC, I, I, I've tried to, Brett, let you guys know of anything that he feels like uh, is an important, um, piece of information about the trip. I, I sent you guys a quick message that was sort of generic, uh, that we felt pretty good about the trip. I want to give you a couple of details that, um, that are interesting to consider. We, we presented two initiative packages to the delegation. Uh, we had scheduled meetings organized, uh, well done, I felt like very well planned, well organized. We were on top of our game, we had visuals, we had an actual report that we gave to the staff. They have significant information at their disposal, if they're willing to look at it and utilize it. That helps to substantiate the requests that we made. Two primary focuses that y'all are aware of, this is the, what we call the I-20 connector loop. This is that piece of the Highway eighteen bypass, it runs from the I-20 connections on both ends, east and west of I-20, so at the Cross Gates Boulevard exit, uh, the Great Separation component is a primary focus of that. But the focus also extends a, all around Highway eighteen bypass to the east end of Brandon, and eventually makes its way connects back to I-20 on the east, on the east end. That is a long-range, significant transportation initiative. What you've done now to, to get us aligned, the Transportation for America should bear fruit on those projects. Here's the, the, the big takeaway on that, and this is what we focus, uh, our, um, uh, our attention on with the delegation. Uh, the, that project, that transportation project has multiple stakeholders, uh, available to us who, uh, who will be supported, and so, it, it's, it's a county-oriented initiative because the impact to the county is significant. It, there is economic development activity, there is transportation and congestion-related issues. There are people who come from as far away as Bay Springs and beyond, who use the, the bypass corridor to get to Jackson every day, uh, there is significant undeveloped property in and around that area that right now is not accessible. Uh, that could be helped to be accessible as a part of the project, so you've got the county, you've got MDOT, you've got KCS, or whoever ends up with KCS, you've got the City of Brandon, you've got the City of Pearl, and others, um, and obviously, that, uh, each of those players has something unique that they bring to the table and interest that's different from the others, that, that really sets that up as the kind of project that we hope to look for. Uh, we, uh, we presented all that information, it was well received. Uh, we have meetings upcoming with all of those constituencies, including contacts that we can make now through Transportation for America, with the federal side and potentially with KCS, uh, and with the folks that are overseeing that merger that is underway. Uh, so, for those that don't know the Meridian Speedway, that section of rail that there is controlled by KCS currently, they are selling. KCS shareholders have voted that they're gonna sell and transfer, uh, and enter into a merger arrangement. We don't know who it's gonna end up with, could be Canadian National, could be Canadian Pacific, those are the two primary competitors to swallow up KCS, don't know exactly where that's headed, but there's a bunch of regular boys that comes along with that, and so efforts are now underway to make sure we get, there is gonna be a decision-making railroad about the Great Separation project, we were working to try to nail that down. Uh, and to get their buy-in on it. Uh, we expect MDOT to be a player, we expect them to be, uh, a significant part of this. Uh, and we expect at some point, the State of Mississippi, to be very interested in this project. Uh, long and short of it, we're not looking for the county, or any one or the other of these folks that have an interest here to carry the whole weight of the, of the project. So we're, we're trying to piece together everybody that is and should be interested in this project, get them to the table, and do what we can to make sure everybody has buy-in.
Yeah, I mean, cause it, it's a regional deal, it's not just Rankin County, it's, a lot of counties could be affected and benefit from, from this. And I'm, I wanna commend Craig and, and the rest, what they did, I mean, they did a super job, and of course, that was my first time ever going to Washington, and, but Craig outdid himself and did a great job, thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Good deal.
I, I, I wanna give you, uh, the good news, you, we like to talk a, a lot about what we felt like, and, uh, maybe not so much have anything really to show for it for a while, and that's the way it works when you're looking for help out of DC. It's just gonna take some time, lots of conversations, but we were very much encouraged by the fact that one of our delegation in particular, uh, had his staffer contact me on the morning we flew back from DC and indicated that they felt strongly enough about this project that they had found a way to, um, essentially to provide some level of allocation, at least a request has been submitted on behalf of our county uh, for an allocation on the Great Separation piece of this project. Uh, we don't know at this point where that stands, but it is a FY-21 allocation request. And it's several hundred thousand dollars, and so we felt, uh, we felt encouraged that they were already at work in response to what we had talked about. That money, if we receive it, will be made available to push the planning piece of that project, the pre-construction activity to push that forward. The key takeaway for us is this, as long as all the authorized transportation projects are continuing to receive funding allocations, the project will continue to be at the forefront of additional allocations. These are self-familiar processes, where we can show that this project has already been funded and needs to continue to be funded to completion.
I apologize.
And we got some additional funding in the interim to do additional planning activities. And DC understands, okay, we're already in that game. It's a lot easier for us to explain why we need help if they're already in it. I hope that's sufficiently clear, and so to that extent, what we did in going to DC and having our meetings is a success, just getting an allocation request put forward for us on this project is success. I wanna see, I'm like you, and, and we joked amongst ourselves, we still gotta point out that we're not actually bringing the check back. So we are anxious to see if we get that fully funded and we get some money in hand to do that project for. But it's at least encouraging that we are on their radar and efforts aren't away. The second initiative that we talked to them about, and Daniel, the issue of this, was our currently authorized and funded in the past work in the Mill Creek Basin. And so we have continued to beat that drum as hard and as loudly as we know how. And Brad can attest to this, we talked at length to them, with them, about our current efforts to stand up our county-wide stormwater management plan. And how that fits in to what we're already doing in the Mill Creek Basin, and to some degree in the Bridge Creek Basin. Both of those were subject matters of discussion, both of those were well-received. I, I wanna, I'm not overselling this, I wanna tell you this, the fact that this board has already invested in a county-wide stormwater management plan is a big deal, and it gives us finally, a way to talk to Washington DC about what we're already doing, and can they come alongside to help? Being able to message that with them is so much better for us than going up there and saying, we got issues and can y'all pay for it? So, the fact that y'all are invested in a plan, the fact that we can show them the plan, the fact that, by the way, we've already had conversations with important people, important parts of the puzzle, the Corps of Engineers, NRCS, the fact that we have their, um, agreement that what we're doing is good helps us immensely in other ways. Uh, whether we get an authorization, whether, uh, continuing authorization, we already have an authorization. Whether we get a continuing authorization or not on that remains to be seen, but we have specific requests that are on the table with our delegation to see to it, that we get them, uh, in legislation, authorized. Then we will work on the allocation piece. That effort, that drainage basin work, is probably gonna be a twenty-twenty-two focus effort on allocations. So we hope to get the authorization and then we'll work on the allocation. Overall, big picture, a good meeting, a good trip, well worth it. At least we think we're gonna have several hundred thousand to come forward and help us on the transportation piece of that, alright? So that's, that'll let y'all have questions, that's really all I need to say about that. I, uh, the, the, the last item I've got additional business, just a quick informal, uh, you guys asked us uh, when we, when we found out that we had some material that left our White Road location, County Barn location, you guys asked us to.
Yeah, he got a slap on the hand.
So the guy, uh, the guy that, uh, that was involved in that, uh, I did exactly what you guys asked me to do. I presented that, uh, through our justice court system, I asked that, uh, that the, that the gentleman be held accountable for that. Uh, he pled guilty, pled larceny, he was fined, and was, uh, required to pay court fees. Uh, he was given thirty days of jail time, but it was suspended, uh, and the way that works, by the way, is essentially just hanging over his head. If he does this again, he's gonna spend time in jail for thirty plus whatever he gets for doing it again. So I think the message has been publicly sent now, that this board is not gonna tolerate somebody helping themselves to our material in our county barn locations, uh, and, uh, my hope is that we won't have this issue again. So I, I just wanted to follow up, we did what you asked us to do, the justice court took action to do something about it. It may or may not be in keeping what you guys had in mind, but, uh.
That's a misdemeanor?
Yeah.
I think it sends, sends a message, I don't think you have that problem, and I don't know how it's gonna send a message, I don't know how the message got out there, except just one person. I don't think he'll be, I don't think he'll be talking about it.
We, we did what we need to do, and we followed, yeah, I've got, uh, at least a couple of matters that I mean, addressed with the executive session, and then I think we've got personnel. I, I've got a couple of, of, of potential issues.
Hey, I need, I need one thing on additional business, also on the same side. Might, might, might I go quick, might I go quick? Several, uh, I guess before we came in office, there was a, uh, a plan the sheriff had, I don't wanna call it a plan, but, and, uh, a thought or a dream he had at one point to put a gun range in on shallow road that we had some land on. And I know they've done some work out there, I know Gaines and I talked a lot about it, and I know Brad's kinda chimed in some, a good bit on it, but one of the things I wanna do is try to get that gun range moving, there's several reasons why that, that could be really important. One, for our law enforcement guys to have a place to go shoot and work on their skills on that same side. Uh, we've done some work out there, we had Mike go out and look at some things as far as, uh, additional work he could do compared to what he's already done. Uh, Gaines had a great idea, he mentioned about an, an additional spot.
We also are looking at maybe a building for training, uh, and just some red iron metal building. I'm talking about fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But go ahead.
Yeah, so, uh, additional areas that we know that this could be utilized for, that, I know Gaines has mentioned several times to me, and I've heard him talk about it for about a couple of years, is a place for those four eight kids to go, to be able to, to shoot and, and things like that, that we had a spot that would help those guys, and I know the sheriff doesn't really get a lot of good light, you know, and he doesn't really get a lot of things his way, but this is one project I think that would, would really benefit it. So what I'd like to do is, is sit down and move forward with a project on that, that will get this gun range up and running. We, we've got some just rough schematics, and, and we, we talked a little bit of money things the other day, just kinda try to put some ballpark things. The, the sheriff needs his fingerprint on it to be able to say, hey, this, this will work for me, and this will work on, on his vision of, of the range, but uh, I, I'd like to go ahead and create a project for that, and authorize some money for him to put out there, to get this thing started, get it moving. Sheriff, this is some one-time startup, not one-time, but starter money to get you going on that side, where we get the range going, Mike does the dirt work. We get some props down there, rocks, buildings, maybe we get one side of the road done this year, come back next year for the, the other side of the road, or whatever, but somewhere you could put your fingerprint on the thoughts and vision you have on it, um. So you've got, you've got great levels of expertise in your department to help it move, but what I'd like to.
What do you need then?
Well, I, I was, I, I hadn't really, I hadn't, I hadn't put him in a corner show to say what he needs.
The Brian's talking about, and Brian, and maybe a couple of us, to get together and dr- just put it on paper after we look at it, and we need to get key, to set aside some money in the budget that we're coming into for one, this first year, I'm gonna say a hundred and fifty thousand, but we're probably gonna need to come back at next year with maybe another hundred for the other side of the road, but we need a training facility, not just firearms, but firearms and a building that they can go into and have exercises and a shoot house, and, and Daniel or Brian can explain to y'all what a shoot house is, we need that for training, to where when we go to court, these guys have been trained every year.
Right.
Yeah, and, and the additional side of that, the, the sheriff's got people that can participate with, I'm not trying to volunteer as sheriff's men, but on the four eight side with the kids, to come out there and allow those guys to, to help them shoot and learn the firearm safety things that are there.
That's the fastest.
Yeah.
Growing. The, or, or thing in four eight.
There, there's no, there's nobody, there's nobody better than.
Air guns.
Yeah.
And twenty-two rifles, fastest thing growing, uh, and, and more than horses.
Well, they can do it anywhere, so I mean, you know, like, what I'm saying, you don't have to have top of money for an animal.
But, yeah, and, and I guess that's the thing, there's nobody better than his expertise and his group, I, I, Sheriff, I'm not trying to volunteer your people to do that, but I know you, you've got a passion for four eights and the barns and stuff like that as well, so, I, I'm with Gaines, so if we need to put that on the agenda slate to, uh, add additional business, to allocate that money, to starter money.
Put it in the budget.
Well, yeah, we've got two things going here, now we're looking, put it in the budget, or you wanting to do it now?
I.
I'd like to get, I'd like to get it started now, and I'd like to have some money available to get it going.
We, we, we really need to try to do.
We, we, we really need to try to do, not trying to butt in, we're trying to do the dirt work, you know, this summer while it's dry.
Now, now's the time to do the dirt side of it, so.
Well.
I, I give a guy a thing, and Mike will go out there and look, and get the doctor to draw it out for him, and I don't know if they know that it'll, if we're having things from the EPA or. So I know that every couple of years you have to put the lid out, but I don't know if there's any regulations on the front end when it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He, he, he would know how to tackle.
Why we just do it kinda as, as, lets you start like you're starting there, if that's what you wanna do, and then we'll, I mean, I, I'm, I think we're all on board with that.
I hear Mark.
Right.
Hundred and fifty thousand for this year?
Starting now, starting now.
Start, I'll start right now.
Yeah.
And then, I know we're gonna need to come back next year, and if, see what our budget looks like, what we can do, but I would like to have that as a training facility. And they may add things down, you know, in the future, I would like to have the nicest facility in the south for a local department.
Well, you know, you've got some counties that, that put money into gun ranges for safety and stuff like that, and I know Harrison County's got a good one down there, DeSoto County's got one, Richland kinda dives around a little bit. We have to piggyback on Malota, and Malota's been very generous to us on the same side, but. Yeah, you, you still gotta, everybody wants Malota's range, but this would be something there, but this would give you a project set, money set, we get started now, to get the plans going, where you can get Harrison's crew moving dirt and running, so.
Alright, okay.
It's a motion to add that first.
So we need to add this to the agenda, okay, motion to add this to, huh?
Yeah.
Motion to add this to the agenda by Daniel, second by Brad, any discussion? Not all papers aye, all opposed?
Alright, so then the motion approved.
Motion approved by Brad, second, I mean, uh, Daniel, second by Brad, any more discussion? All papers aye, all opposed, okay? Now, you need to go to the executive session.
Where you gonna motion?
Uh, I, okay.
Motion for the need?
Uh, Daniel makes a motion, need to go to the executive session, just to discuss litigation and personnel, uh, I'll second it, all papers aye, all opposed?
Mike.
Need, okay, now I have a motion to go into the executive session, all papers aye, all opposed, okay?
Got one, I got one in my pocket.